Tuesday, February 27, 2024, Planning Commission meeting. We all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kristin, can we do the roll call?
Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Keltner?
Here.
Commissioner Staff noted he would be absent. Commissioner Hamamay?
Here.
Commissioner Armsman?
Here.
And Commissioner Woods?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Staff?
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? He's excused. Approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve the agenda for February 27?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of January 24, 2024. Any changes or motions? Move to approve?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Communications, we have here our Michigan planner. And I know we have some things for the public hearings. Is there anything else?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Now we move to citizen comments. This is for items not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your comments and will try to address them during discussions. Are there any citizen comments for things not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on. New business. A public hearing for PSU 0124 at 2758 Coolidge. Kristin, would you like to give us a little intro?
Yes. This is a special land use request for first-floor office use in the downtown district, which in that district is a special land use. There are no site changes proposed. There would be signage changes if this were to be approved. All special land use requests do require a public hearing, and the Planning Commission is asked to consider the standards in Section 138 653 of the zoning ordinance and reference those in any approval or denial motions when you're determining what to do. This would be a recommendation to City Council, so the Commission is not approving or denying tonight, but making a recommendation, and the additional step of City Council would remain. Staff is recommending approval based on the anticipated impacts of the business and the fact that it's in line with previous approvals in the downtown district for first-floor office. I'm available if you have any questions. And there were some public comments for this one.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
I am.
Hi. Would you like to come up and talk to us about what you're doing?
Yep, my name is Daniel Haberman. I'm the manager of Upper Michigan Land Company. And looking to come in and move our headquarters from Troy into Berkeley. I'm very excited about it and hopeful that it'll get the blessing today and then final approval before the council. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff or applicant?
I guess I have a question for staff. What is allowed by right in that, in this building?
Yeah, so retail uses, restaurant uses, those are the types of things that would be allowed by right. Just from a use perspective, obviously, we'd have to look at parking and see how that would factor into those things. But there are uses that are allowed by right. The most recent one that came before this board that would have been similar was the pinch law, which was like three or four years ago.
I'm just curious, I guess, office seems less intense than a restaurant. So why would office be a special land use? Do you know? Did you participate in that decision?
No, this is how it's been for several years. So I can't speak as to why it was included like that originally. The way that I was looking at this special land use request and evaluating how to make a recommendation to you all is are there negative impacts that would be associated with this that would have impacted adjacent neighbors, like noise and odor and traffic and those sorts of things? And also, I was looking at past decisions of the board and determining whether or not I thought this was in line with those decisions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then at this point, I'm going to ask you to sit down so I can open the public hearing. Opening the public hearing at 7:05. And so, again, I would ask you to come up, state your name and address or relation to the property, and you have three minutes to tell us your thoughts.
Can I go?
Sure.
So, oops, let me not this thing over. I'm Nick Appelyard. I'm with Perch, which is the retail. That's my wife. So we actually oppose this for several reasons. The first one is, you know, we're retail, okay? And we're actually building some quite nice critical mass in that little area. We have Amados next door, which is a restaurant. We also have the coffee place on our left, which is, we get a nice little community going. And with, you know, with the, I think it was, what's the name of the place across the road? Yeah, Vitrine, without closing, you know, before, we had people come over to our retail. It had a nice little community going. And I think if we start with, now with Folio being there, if we have a, whatever it's going to be, an office space, I think it's just going to create different dynamics, which is not going to be good for our business. And I don't think it's going to be good for the streets either, because you've got some good traffic of people, get people actually driving from Ann Arbor. Men seem to come and to actually drive into Berkeley to our store. So I think if you have, having an office there, it doesn't do anything. It doesn't build a business, a little community there at all. You're just taking it to a commercial environment. So that's why we oppose it.
Thank you.
If need to repeat myself, I will do.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Uli Laskevich, and I'm also a Berkeley business. We own Olmans Health and Beauty. So, and I can only agree to the other speaker and to all the businesses that try to establish a lively retail/restaurant zone on Coolidge Highway. And I have two things to say. So we also get, or we also got customers from between. And when it was known that the store will close, those customers, mostly Berkeley residents, were sad. So they are missing a thing that was in Berkeley. And this is getting regular clothes and little gifts for normal people. So all the people that live in Berkeley are people that tries to support all of our businesses. And what I mean by that, they support us, the retailers and the restaurants. We have stuff that you could find at Target or other where, but they like to come to us. So that's one point. The next point is, we all try to establish a lively Berkeley. There's a lot of initiatives that are done, Berkeley Street Art Fest, other festivals. But I think the day-to-day life depends on the retailers and the restaurants. That's why people come and want to live in Berkeley. And that helps us all. It's not only the retailers or the restaurants that helps if more people want to move to that community. And therefore, I propose that we look closely who can move in all of our empty buildings. And I think this is just an example where we need to look twice. Which type of, which type of business goes into there? I'm not opposed to what will come, but I'm questioning how the new business can support our downtown Berkeley.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julie LaFranboise, and I've been a Berkeley resident for 25 years. My husband is a teacher in the district, and I work for Perch down the street with my friend Molly and her husband. And basically, I oppose having it turned into a retail or a non-retail space because I am a resident of Berkeley, and I think that a thriving downtown community is really going to write or to higher my property values. So it's going to make our house more, worth more money in our property if we have a thriving downtown area. And I also feel like a thriving downtown area really builds up community. And I know all the people. When I go into Amados, I know them. When I go into other retail places, I know them. If there were, if they're just businesses, I don't feel like that they would be all from necessarily working towards the common goal of improving Berkeley. So I oppose it, and I just hope that it can turn into another retail spot or a restaurant and not more offices. Thank you.
No, right now, we're just dealing. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Molly Patterson. I own Perch with my husband and, well, Julie doesn't own it, but she pretty much does. So I wanted to just remark on the sense of community we've had with Olmans and Vitrine and June and December and the bookstore and Casa Amado and now Coffee and Bark. And that would, part of that would be, is lost now, and it will be even more lost with an office space going in. There's already office spaces for rent, Coffee and Bark, Folio. We rent office space in our building. And we have people every week come to our store. Our store is a destination. So we have people come every week from Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids, Traverse City. We've had people from Chicago. We've had people out of state. We've had people from California. And, I mean, visiting family, but they come to us because they follow us on social media. And then they say, where do we go to eat? Where else do we shop? And we direct them to all our friends and neighbors. And so, we would love to see this momentum and progression going. And if there's an office space there, it's just a huge loss to all of us as realitators, retailers. And I hope you will consider that.
Thank you. Careful, don't tip over the cord.
Hi, my name is Luke James. I own Toadvine Books across the street from this location. And I want to echo what some of the previous people were saying. I feel like we've, over the last five years since we've been there, we're just starting to reach a critical mass of, you know, great foot traffic, a lot of pedestrians, cool shops and dining locations opening up. And I feel like this would be a setback turning Vitrine into an office space. So I would recommend against the exception.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Desiree Dutcher. I am both a resident and a Berkeley business owner. I am standing here today because, not against the business itself, whether it's real estate or office use, but for the change of the zoning of the building. If we go down Coolidge, there's plenty of other office spaces available. They're currently empty. I would recommend that when a business is looking to join Berkeley, instead of disrupting or changing a location or zoning, it would be ideal if they tried to find one that already fit their needs. There's nothing against, you know, having a real estate office, whether it's up north, land use or local. It is a business, and it would help the downtown. We understand that there's lots of different businesses for all kinds of uses. However, in that area, there's only four stores, including Vitrine, that are open for the retail kind of shopping destination. They act almost as four corners during DDA events, outings, anything that's really like down that Coolidge corridor. They're locations that are sought out with Vitrine closing as well as one of the other local businesses. I feel like we're kind of lacking in the retail environment, and I'd prefer if that location were to remain how it is currently zoned. That is all.
Thank you. Anybody else? We did get a public comment via email from Katie and Nick Forte at June and December. They also are asking that we decline the special land use. And they talk about some of the guiding principles and the master plan and also vibrant foot traffic in that downtown area and preferring to see retail. They mentioned the new crosswalks and proximity to successful new businesses, like the coffee shop across the street. And they believe that turning Vitrine into office space would undermine those efforts. Okay, last call. I am closing the public hearing at 7:16. Okay, Planning Commission. Did you ever let him address the comments, or do you not do that? How do you usually handle that? Because I'd like to hear what he has to say. I mean, you can ask him. I generally don't like the back and forth between people, but if there's something there that you would like him to address, more power to you.
Well, I would like to, the applicant had requested to comment on some of the comments. I would like to hear his response.
Sure, I appreciate that. You know, one thing I think is important to note, I understand fully the love for retail. I grew up in the retail business. I grew up pulling patterns and cutting fabric for many years. So, you know, I get it. I understand the importance. But this isn't an office replacing beloved local business. This is going to be a relocation of a company to Berkeley into what's going to be a vacant building. So it's unfortunate, and I understand the love for a particular business, but that's not, you know, it's unfortunate, it's not something that we're doing. We've located a phenomenal building in just an amazing city. And, you know, using the factors laid out by the zoning ordinance, you know, that we think moves us forward. Again, with the understanding that, you know, one of the reasons to move to this area is because, for example, the facade of Perch looks fantastic. You know, there's so many good spaces. Your guys' space is exceptional. And we want to be a good part of that mix and a good neighbor and fit in well with the neighborhood and move into this great building and make it look even better to continue the growth for the city. Thank you.
I did, before we go move on to discussion, I did want to at least clarify that allowing office isn't necessarily a change of zoning. The zoning of that area allow, allows office as a use under a special land use. So it's not changing the zoning. It's still the same zoning. It's just allowing a use that whenever this ordinance was last created, felt like it might need a few extra eyes on it.
And can I clarify with staff? The special land use is tied to the particular applicant? Is that correct? So if applicant leaves the space, it would revert to its uses by right and would need another special land use permit if somebody comes in with a similar request?
Right, unless it was like the exact same business, like another land development company. Generally, yes, but if it's the exact same thing.
Okay.
Questions, comments, discussion? So, no, I don't want this to turn into a back and forth, right? I mean, I think we heard you, and I think we heard him. And then now is the time that Planning Commission has to discuss.
So my comment is, I do also prefer retail and restaurant for that walkable area. However, we can't pull them out of thin air. We have somebody who wants to move into Berkeley and be a part of Berkeley and our business community. It meets the requirements of the ordinance. I struggle to say no. That's my thought.
I mean, I think I also struggle, right? I want bodies and buildings, right? And I will agree that this area of Coolidge has kind of seen this great revitalization in the last few years. It is vibrant. There are people out. I'm sure it's only going to be more so once Bombshell opens. And there's already an office right there. Every time you stick more office on that block, every time you stick more offices in there, you make that walkability.
Where? Because I'm actually on Google Maps trying to get a feel for, because I didn't see office. In fact, I saw vacant right directly across the street, a vacant building. Is this old? Am I missing something?
It might be old. So the law firm, that's at, that's at the corner.
By, across the?
On the same side of the street.
The new pinch law firm?
Yeah.
On the same block?
Oh, yeah, because it still has Panspiration there.
Okay, so this is just old?
Yeah. So, yeah, it's at the end of, this building right here is going to be the law firm.
Okay, that's the one I said was vacant?
Yeah. So I feel, so I also feel conflicted, right?
Should we run through the points that are listed in the staff memo? Just to, or I know Kristin did explain that they're all satisfied based on the special land use permit, but.
I mean, most certainly, we should go through those. And, you know, as with most of our ordinances, they are subjective. And I think many of these, that staff reasonably said was fulfilled, the surrounding business owners would probably also say it's not. It is going to cause us an injury. So, but we can most certainly discuss them, and we should discuss them. I'm actually going to, "The proposed use will promote the use of the land in a socially and economically desirable manner." Do we want to do them one by one, or just?
I would, yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Yes, I think to the point that it's going to be a vacant space. So it meets this economically desirable manner to fill an empty space.
I agree that, yeah, it is fulfilling a vacant space. However, I do understand the perspective from the public comments today is, is it socially and economically desirable? Specifically on the socially part, it seems to be a very close-knit group of retail businesses in a specific part of the downtown along Coolidge, designated downtown along Coolidge. So I kind of struggle with that a little bit.
I would, I would agree with struggling with that because, I mean, there's lots of things that we wouldn't allow to go in there that would also fill a building, you know? And I would maybe even argue that economically for those more active uses, the coffee shop, the ice cream place, the tea place, a bookstore, like those are places that people will walk in and walk out of. And every time you add something that people will walk in and out of in shopping, you're adding to their economic desirableness. And every time you add something where people are not compelled to walk in and out without an exact purpose, you know? You're probably lessening that economic desirableness.
I guess, by having, you know, employees at a business like that, though, I know in my office space, I like to go out and, you know, check out different things or grab a coffee, especially if it's like right next door. So wouldn't that kind of counter-set maybe some of that? You have like people coming in Monday through Friday that would venture out into those businesses. Right, use the restaurants, use the coffee shops. And it sounds like there's already some temporary office space, mixed use kind of in that area? So maybe the idea isn't out of the question for that?
Yeah, I'd be curious. I don't know if we're necessarily allowed to ask, but I'd be curious, like, if they're going to have people in the office Monday through Friday, eight to five? How many people do they, do they expect a lot of walk-in customers?
Can you? Yes, please, sorry.
Office hours will vary. You know, we deal, depends on who's working, when and where they're coming in from. So it could be legal surveyors, appraisers. It's hard to specify exactly how many will come at any one time. But, you know, by, absolutely, the existence of a strong viable business moving to Berkeley into a vacant building is a public good.
Will you have clients coming to the office?
Yes.
And will there be somebody in the office Monday through Friday?
Generally, yes. I can't, you know, I wouldn't be, you know, 100% guarantee, but generally, yes.
Is it you, or will you also have employees?
Primarily me.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm also struggling with, it'd be nice to have a retailer/restaurant, but certainly better than having a vacant building.
Wait, no, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We already had a public comment period, so now it's our turn to discuss and to ask questions of the applicant. And I'm sorry, I know that's super frustrating to hear, but, I'm sorry, no. We can address it, but just.
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, every use has a certain number of parking spaces that are required unless it's in certain districts. And in this particular instance, an office space is allowed. Do you know how many spaces off the top of your head?
I don't. Our zoning administrator evaluates that as part of the business license application, and she did look at that and confirm that we're all good.
Is satisfied, isn't it? By a municipal lot?
Probably within 500 feet of municipal lot, but I did not personally evaluate that, so I don't want to say that for sure.
All right, so let's move on to the next standard. "The proposed use is necessary for public convenience at that location." I don't even know what that standard means.
What is that? Yeah, I struggle to really understand that, that point. Necessary for the public convenience at that location. That makes it sound almost as if it's a, it's a critical type of service that benefits clientele at that specific location. That's the way I kind of read it, but.
I think this one has always bothered me because, yes, because what does that mean?
But it would be convenient for those customers serviced by the company. So I guess that's how it's, that's how it's being explained by the staff, that it will provide storefront location for clients of the business to access.
Yeah, but it's not like... It's not like a neighborhood...
Yeah, waiting for you to give me a use where this would fit. Go ahead.
Yeah.
A surgeon?
Yeah. Well, and I'm just trying to reconcile the fact, and just reconcile my thought process with, you know, the bullet point. You know, generally, when I think of this type of use, it's essentially a real estate office. So, you're not going to be getting people walking in from the neighborhood to use it on an everyday basis. You have people coming in from out of town, you know, most probable, most probably, and parking and coming in. And I don't know, I don't see how that would be essential to this specific type of use, this specific type of business.
Agreed. I feel like it's more like a private convenience at this location as opposed to a public convenience.
I guess I... I don't quite understand. You're saying because it's not a use that residents of Berkeley will just pop in and out of, it doesn't serve a purpose?
No, not that it doesn't serve a purpose. I think there's a... I guess it doesn't serve a higher and best use for that specific location.
Because I'm looking at the flip side, is we're potentially bringing people who aren't familiar with Berkeley to see what we have.
I see that as well, yes. I'm just trying to...
I know, I know.
Figure out what that means.
I'm playing devil's advocate, so we can all hash it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not a standard...
Note to self, in the steering committee, let's not have standards like that. Any thoughts on the crazy standard?
No, it's definitely very big.
"The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses."
So, to the... The law offices are right down the street. So, it's compatible because there's mixed use from retail and office space within this area.
I agree. Yeah, I don't think it's incompatible.
Hell are quiet down there.
"The proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected."
Correct. The negative statement is that it will not cause any detrimental public health, safety, or welfare. So, it's... I default positive.
Yeah, so basically, it's consistent with the zoning.
Yes.
"The proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood." I mean, I feel like a number of property owners here most certainly thinks it would cause injury to them.
I guess it depends on what you call injury. I mean, I... I understand the global concern of wanting to create a walkable community with purely retail and restaurant space, but we don't dictate that.
I mean, to some degree, with the land... With the special land use, we dictate to some degree.
But this is a use allowed as a special land use. It's not like we're...
For sure. We're not, like, rezoning anything.
No. So, in my opinion, there is no injury because of that, because it is allowed.
All right, so, yeah, discussion seems difficult at best.
Yeah, I don't have anything more to discuss personally, so...
All right, so then I guess I need a motion.
"I will make a motion to approve the special land use because it is consistent with special land use approval for other first-floor offices in the downtown district that have been granted by city council after a positive recommendation by Planning Commission, and that it will promote the use of the land in a socially and economically desirable manner because the office will provide storefront location for clients of the business to access, making it a public convenience at that location. Because the proposed use is located in an area with other uses, office uses and retail uses, it's compatible with adjacent land uses. Additionally, that the use will not cause any detrimental health and safety effects to adjacent businesses, nor does the proposed use cause any detrimental effects to other properties in the neighborhood." And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Kristin, would you like to call roll?
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamadeh?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Sheriff Kempner?
No.
Motion passes five to one.
So, this goes to... This is a recommendation to city council. It will then go to city council. I don't know if it'll be at their next... Probably not at their next meeting, so...
Probably, um, March 18th.
March 18th.
Sheriff Hamadeh? And all of the comments will be included in the packet to council.
But it doesn't preclude anybody?
No, no, everyone can speak again, but they will receive the comments.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing for PSU 0224 at 1-818 Mortenson Boulevard. Kristin, would you like to...
Yes. So, this is a similar request in that it is for a special land use with no site plan associated with it. Totally different use and totally different district, though. This is for a childcare center in a single-family district, and this is for seven to 12 children. So, to give everyone a little bit of background, as we're going through the zoning ordinance rewrite and in many other communities, there's only ordinances would call out these types of group daycare homes or home daycares as special land uses. Our zoning ordinance just calls out a childcare center. It doesn't have this niche carved out for the seven to 12 children, which we are allowed to do per state law. So, consulting with our city attorney, because childcare centers are listed as a special land use in single-family residential districts, he said this use for seven to 12 children, even though it isn't in-home daycare, would need to go through the special land use process. So, I just want to give you all that background. As I said, there are no site changes. But because this is a special land use request, it comes before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council, and a public hearing needs to be held. Just as in the past case, there are standards in Section 138 653 that have been noted in the staff report and in my review and should be referenced in any approval or denial motions. It's a recommendation of staff that in-home daycare for seven to 12 children would not have detrimental effects on the neighborhood. But obviously, you need to discuss those points as you go through your discussion. If you have any questions, I am happy to address those.
I have one right off the bat.
Sure.
So, this is not the group home designation?
This is not a group home in the colloquial term, what people think of as a group home. This is an in-home daycare for seven to 12 children. It's regulated by the state of Michigan through their Bureau of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs.
As the in-home? I guess... So, that's... I was looking through Lara a little bit, right? So, they have the one to six... It's on my phone, the actual terms, right? And then there's, like, the group home daycare, which is seven to 12. And then there is a childcare or child center, which is like one to whatever.
Traditional, like, daycare center.
Right.
Right. So, the one to six in-home daycare is permitted by right use. Anyone in the city could open one of those. It does not come for any approval before any board or staff. They work through the state for that. When you get into the seven to 12 children, then the state does allow for communities to designate that as a special land use. Like I said, we don't have that category explicitly called out in our ordinance, but on the advice of our city attorney, he recommended we treat it as a special land use because we do call childcare centers special land uses. Does that clear that up?
Can I add on to your question?
Yeah.
So, this particular use, the home daycare, if it were six children or less, would not be a special land use?
Would not be a special land use, would not be reviewed by staff, none of those things, dealing only with the state.
But because they've gone up a category essentially to a little bit more intensive use is why the city attorney is suggesting we treat it as if it were a group daycare home under the state law and go special land use process?
Correct. And in our new zoning ordinance, this will be much more clearly spelled out. And the draft right now would call for this group daycare home, seven to 12 children, as it would be called as a special land use. So, it will be much clearer in the rewrite.
And in our current ordinance, a childcare center is a special land use in our single family?
Correct.
Okay.
And per the Lara requirements, the homeowner is... That's their primary residence as well?
Yes, per the Lara requirements. Now, that is not something that we investigate at the city. That responsibility lies with Lara to determine that that is an in-home residence daycare.
And to clarify another point, I know we were using the term group. And I know when we were doing some rewriting, this came up around adults versus children?
Right.
And this is under a certain age, or...
This is for children.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, all right. So... Okay. Does anyone else have questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Hi. 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 So, my name's Christina Del Pizza, and a part of this that I, you know, wasn't shared is that I own Little Seedlings of Bloomfield, Birmingham, Beverly Hills. I have one in Gross Point in Livonia. And I want to give you kind of some background on how this came to be, because it's a unique model. We have a, you know, I have a collection of in-home group daycares. I was a teacher at Country Day, and my son, who's 14 now and much too old for childcare, his childcare closed, and I couldn't find daycare. I... Every place that was awesome had a waitlist, and every place that didn't have a waitlist was not awesome. And so, as a mom, you know, I was the one that had to leave my job to care for him, and I had plenty of colleagues that were in the same position. So, at that point, I opened licensed home daycare in my home, and we filled up immediately. And I hired another teacher who, you know, had a four-year degree, and we rocked it. We had the best home daycare ever, and we had a crazy waitlist. And so, we... And my teacher that was teaching along with me had a housing issue. She didn't, you know, I... There's a strong philanthropic thread with what we do, but she... So, we pay our teachers. We try to stay competitive with our teachers so that they, you know, make enough money that they can walk away from their job in a public school and still, you know, make a decent income, which it doesn't say much for teaching. But anyway, so we opened up Little Seedlings of Beverly Hills, and that solved a housing issue for my teacher. It was licensed by the state, again, killed it, rocked it. We had a lot of children from this Berkeley Huntington Woods area, just not enough childcare. And so, you know, rinse and repeat. We kept opening them and solving housing issues for teachers because it's rent-free, we pay utilities, and then also helping these moms in the community and providing a really loving, nurturing, licensed, quality experience for the children. So, here we are in Berkeley, because I have families that are driving from Berkeley all the way to Hickory Grove and Telegraph to drop their children off. I have a little boy at that location who qualifies for speech services through Berkeley Public Schools, but they can't find one childcare in the area to take their son. So, they have to private pay, and they can't come in during the day. So, it needs to happen at night. Again, another hardship for mom to balance all of this. So, that's kind of, you know, this was built out of necessity for the community, and it's a really loving business. I'd like to think we're helping women in a lot of areas, our teachers, moms, you know, the families that we care for. So, that's kind of our background. I don't know if I'm missing a lot. We've been to zoning meetings before, and usually, people come with pitchforks and torches, and no one wants to live next to a daycare. But our reputation, we take, you know, we take houses that aren't really well-loved, and we make it the best house on the block. You know, we have no complaints from any of the municipalities that we currently provide care in, including Gross Point, which doesn't have any in-home childcare, so we were the first allowed. And those people with pitchforks and torches end up calling us later and asking to enroll their children in our program. So, I'd like to think we're an asset to the community. I don't know. That's it.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
So, you own a number of these. So, this is not going to be you who's living there?
No, so we have a... So, I currently have a teacher who will be living there, and it will be licensed under her name through Lara. That's how all of them are licensed. But I am, you know, the homeowner. I own the home, and I maintain them. So, grass cutting, snow removal, you know, currently, it's getting fixed up. We were actually told before we purchased the house, I called the city of Berkeley, and we were told there, you know, like, home daycares are in the city and that you don't need to do... There's no approval needed. And so, we purchased the home, and then we were told that things weren't necessarily done the way that they need to be done moving forward in the past. And so, you know, here we are at, you know, this zoning meeting. But then we were told that we need a privacy fence, and we put it up right away, a beautiful white privacy fence around the property, which replaced a chain-linked fence that was falling apart.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you have a teacher who gets the license and lives there?
Yes.
And then what happens if she, like... Or he, I don't know.
Yeah.
What happens if their, like, life circumstance changes?
Yeah, so...
They, like, get married or whatever?
Sure. So, then licensing happens all over again. It has to be relicensed in a new teacher, a new licensee's name. But I have to tell you, you know, we've been doing this for 10 years now, and no one's moved out. All of our teachers have stayed there. It's a pretty nice situation. They have free housing, and they have a job that they love, and they really become part of the community. But if that were to happen, which I'm sure it will at some point, that's exactly what we would do. We would work with licensing to give that opportunity to another teacher. And we have plenty of teachers. I have, you know, I have 25 teachers, and many of them are looking for a housing opportunity, and many of them qualify for... To be a licensee, because, again, we like to hire our teachers who have four-year degrees in elementary arts.
So, if that person decided they just didn't want to be child caring anymore, you would find somebody else to move in there? Could they stay there?
So, they could. I mean, the way that the lease is written, like, let's say someone were to fall ill, which, God forbid, that were to happen, and we would have to close down childcare. There's always an option for them to pay rent at that point if they no longer wanted to operate the childcare, because that business really pays for, you know, the maintenance and the mortgage of the home.
Right. Okay. Do you have a question?
I have a question. So, I'm not familiar with the Lara, and I think we've looked at this before. But with the seven to 12 children, like, are there any other adult-to-child ratio numbers that have to be kept? adult, adult-to-child ratio numbers that have to be kept with, so there's one person living there, but other employees as well?
Yes, yes, yeah, so there, usually we have two part-time teachers in addition to a full-time licensee, and then we have directors that are in the homes multiple times a week, and, you know, and I'm in all the homes as well.
And what will be the, uh, hours of operation?
Seven to five.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Are pickup times staggered, or there are certain pickup times?
Yeah, we stagger them, um, just for, I mean, part, originally, we staggered it because other municipalities asked us to for street traffic reasons, um, but it worked out so well because, you know, having twelve parents, which really, it isn't twelve families, it always ends up being like eight because we have siblings, eight-ish, um, but having that many people come right at five o'clock is really hard on the kids, it's a little chaotic, so having them kind of trickle in and, um, with a set schedule, a staggered schedule, works out really well for us. And it's, it's good for the neighbors. You don't have like a lineup of cars, you know, blocking the street.
Is there, um, is there a traffic study required for this type of use? Oh, no, okay.
But I did have a question about the traffic, because frankly, that's my concern. How long ago did you buy the house?
In December.
So have you been out there to see at rush hour what eleven mile is like and what trying to get out onto eleven mile is like?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the, the concern that some of the neighbors have expressed about what it will do to that traffic?
Sure.
How do you respond to that?
Yeah, again, you know, it's, it's one or two cars at any given time, and, um, and they pick up their child very quickly and off they go, so that's always been a concern with all of these homes, and it's never been an issue. We've never received complaints.
I, I wouldn't have as much of a concern if it wasn't Princeton, like, that's one block, and so that's why I'm a little, um, I'm a little concerned, and then I'm, I'm going to ask Kristin later, um, when, in, in her analysis, she indicates that there's no public health safety, welfare concerns, and I think that's kind of where I'm, I'd like to hear more about that, but.
So one thing that attracted us to that home was the fact that it was a corner lot, and there was a boulevard street in front of it, which I know, like, it's a busy street, right, but, um, but just the fact that there, there is that boulevard is, I, in my opinion, I, I think a little more practical than having, you know, two subdivision streets.
It's a good point.
So is your, uh, plan then that there would be drop-offs on the front of the house, like, where the boulevard is, or?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, unless the city required us to use the driveway, which we, we certainly could, um, but it would, that, that would, I think, be something for the city to dictate or to see how it goes, and then give us a call, you know, and let us know if a change needs to be made. Um, we'd be open to that. Again, we're, we want to be a part of the community.
Any other questions before I go to the public hearing?
Um, yeah, I had a question on, so this is a special land use, and Kristin mentioned it, it's basically our recommendation to city council to approve the special land use, but this has no other, this is a home, so there's no other site plan review or anything that we would do that would come back to us, right?
Correct.
In any way, or it just goes to staff for, it doesn't, would even go to staff for any sort of approval?
Right, so there was the requirement for the fence, which has been met, but there's no, there's no additional requirements to review on a site plan basis.
The business license is like a whole nother thing.
Right, the business license would be reviewed just like it is for any business.
I had a question for Kristin, but I was waiting because I thought. You're going to ask it to Kristin?
Um, Kristin, I'd like to hear a little bit more, unless council says it's not appropriate, about the permission that we gave prior to purchasing?
Yeah, so I did not have that conversation, um, but it's likely someone, obviously, in the community development department did. Um, then when the business license was submitted for this particular request, it included a sign-off from the state. The state asked us to sign off that this is an allowable use. Um, this is not something I've done here in Berkeley yet, but it is something I've done in other communities. So when that request came in for us to sign off, our zoning administrator came to me and said, "I've never had this presented to me before, what should I do with it?" Um, and I can't speak to why it's never been given to us before, um, but I reached out then to our city attorney to say, "Hey, in other communities I've worked in, this specific seven to twelve use group is called out. Here it's not called out. I need your advice on what to do. Should we treat it as we treated the one to six, which is just a principal affirmative use, or should we treat it like a childcare center?" And, and his recommendation, we treated it like a childcare center. So that's where that confusion came in. And if you don't mind, Sheriff Kepner, Commissioner Hamamay, I can weigh in a little bit on my thoughts on the traffic impact? Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so in looking at this, I, I did look at the boulevards a little bit different than we would look at some of our other single-family streets, and the fact that it's a corner lot has additional street parking then on both sides of the property as opposed to, um, a lot that is not a corner lot, which has had that frontage right in front of their house. Obviously, public roads are public roads, and people can park anywhere. In the back of my head, I was also thinking about the fact that we have neighborhoods where elementary and middle schools and high schools are integrated into the neighborhoods, and as a person who lives right by the middle school, I can tell you that during pickup and drop-off time every day, um, I have cars out in front of my street for, you know,
I do too.
The ten to fifteen minutes, um, and I, I was struggling to see how this would be that much different, um, than, than the cars that are around the community for pickup and drop-off at, at our elementary and middle and high schools, which is something I think that, that brings character to the community, the fact that those places are integrated into the city and not at some of the outlined spaces, but we do deal with, with the traffic that comes with those. But, but those are my thoughts on the traffic.
Thank you.
I wish that this was operating with six, with no, um, issues, and then it would be an easy, okay, it's not a problem, but we don't have that luxury.
So there are, um, you, you, you currently do have group home daycares in the city of Berkeley that operate, um, they just haven't gone through this process.
So the seven to twelve number?
There could very well be.
We don't know.
We don't know, um, and, and this is kind of part of the processes that we're working on in our department to do things by the book and, and how they should be done, and that's why I reached out to our city attorney to make sure we were following this process, and why we're making sure in our zoning ordinance we're right, that this is clear.
I have to say. I, I came into this, um, concerned, and I had reservations, but if, if they purchased on information we provided, that does factor into my decision.
And I can't speak to that conversation. I don't know if the question was, are in-home daycares allowed?
Okay.
Or not?
Okay.
Um, and I, I would default to, it's up to the property owners to do their due diligence, which it sounds like that was part of that. Um, if, if we had an ordinance that clearly spelled this out, I think that's clear on both ends.
Yeah.
Okay, so does anybody else have any more questions before I move to public hearing, or should I go?
I, I have one.
Oh, sorry.
Do you operate in the summer? Okay.
Yeah, we take a, a week off between Christmas and New Year's and the week of the Fourth of July off, and then obviously holidays here and there.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, we do operate in the summer.
Is the, uh, the driveway is off of Princeton there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on the short side.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to take a seat, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Opening the public hearing at seven fifty-nine. And like with the last one, please come up, state your name, um, city of residence, and if, uh, you live particularly close to the property, that's one of those important things for us to know. And then you have three ma- yes?
Sheriff Kepner, if you wouldn't mind reminding everyone to make sure they sign in so I can get their name correct in the minutes.
Oh, and there's a, there's a sign-in sheet back there, so you can, she can get your name correct in the minutes. And then you have three minutes to talk.
Hi, I'm Colleen Eustaf. I live at seventeen twenty-one Princeton, so I am kitty coroner from that location. I can tell you that is a very bad idea. I'm glad that you have misgiving so far because that intersection is insane all the time. I, I think that you, one of you asked if there's a stoplight. There's soon to be a stoplight at Mortenson and Eleven Mile, so that will be even more backed up. It is the major through affair for the high school students. There's Rogers Elementary right around the corner. We've got Huntington Police, we've got the Vets right around the corner. It is a very, very busy intersection, and it was advertised or written in her application that it's a two-car garage and a two-car driveway. It's a single-car garage, and the only way that you can actually park in a driveway is sideways, so there is no parking on the actual property. I can show you a picture if you'd like.
Um, is she, I think there's a, um.
The street view.
Okay, we can, can I maybe?
My sister, I have some photos here of that particular parking area, as it is today with the fence, and the pictures behind it are with the previous fence, which actually opened up and.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but like, comments, um, I will pass these among us.
So there are, besides the parking, which is, there's no way that people dropping off or being, will be able to stop at Mortenson, because as she says, it is a boulevard, and you have cars that already the residences park there, and there's just one other car that will go along there, so it is very dangerous to be opening and letting kids out. And I know it's an idyllic thought to think that parents are picking up and dropping off kids right away. I have kids, I'm sure a lot of people here have kids, kids simply don't go, "Okay, Mom, I'm going to get in the car," and not do whatever they want to do. Same with the scattering of the pickup. The, again, it's a great idea, but if her hours are seven to five, that means most parents are working seven to five, which means they're going to be dropping off and picking up from seven to five, so there will be no policies about this scattering. How can you insist that this is going to happen? And there's no way to police that. Then you say, she said that what attracted her was the location. What really attracted her, she got the house for some. That's it in a nutshell. And I think that's, she already mentioned that she's, makes these homes the best on the block, which means they are going out for those that are fixer-uppers, those that nobody else is buying, that the price keeps going down, in a nice community. It's a great plan, but then I need to know, if the teachers are getting housing for free, how are they getting paid? How are they getting a livable wage? I don't see how that's remotely possible that they're getting paid and don't have to pay for their housing. How is that good for our tax? Nobody's paying tax there, except the parents that are actually paying for the daycare. That is not set up for seven to twelve kids at all. It's a small home, and you're going to add, we already know that Berkeley has a ton of the rent problem. We try so hard to eradicate it. You're going to have kids outside snacking and eating, and who's going to be cleaning up? Nobody's going to be cleaning up. It's going to be just like a restaurant. The fence that she mentioned is the only improvement.
Three minutes, so I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
The fence is the only improvement that she's made, and if she's aware of the seven to twelve other, the places that offer seven to twelve positions for kids, then there's no shortage that she speaks of. So there is no shortage, and there is no need for this in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Try as be as brief as possible, okay? Um, I believe.
I need your name.
Robert Faust.
Thank you.
I live at one eighty-five Mortenson Boulevard, which is diagonally across down the block. And Luke Orleans, I think, submitted a, uh, some.
Yes, we have a petition from him.
And I was working the north side of the block, okay? Those are additional.
Okay, thank you.
Number one, uh, the recommendation says nothing, just like the application said nothing, okay? I don't know why or how your community development department handles things, but it makes no sense, okay? Number one, they are promoting this right now on their website, and they're looking for applications. No use permit, also, no occupancy permit. They just own a piece of property. Secondly, they are do, they were doing demolition in the property. They had no permit, they started demolishing bearing walls. I saw it three weeks ago, so I walked around to see, I thought somebody was maybe stealing copper, because the businesses, the house has been empty for over two and a half months, okay? Uh, I went in and asked them if they had, what they were doing. They said they were working for the owner. They removed the bearing walls that are Xed out. One of them has a, uh, has a supply vent, there's electrical wires down, there's switches, plugs down, you know, and they got a couple of beams in there temporarily supporting things. And a billing official, I'm assuming it was, because I went up to the city, they went and put a stop on it, okay? Now, whether there's a permit been put on it or not, I have no idea at this particular. Regarding parking, um, she mentioned Gross Point. Um, they, there was an article in the paper after they approved it. They mentioned three, three things in the article. One, the property was just off Mac Avenue. There was a Staples right next to it on the street, on the, on the, on Mac, then their property. Across the street is a public service building with additional public parking, okay? The house is a two-story house, fine. It has more than four spaces going into the backyard, because there's a backyard five-car with backyard garage, and their concerns were relative to, oh, it was okay because it was near a main road, and also because it was parking on-site for, and the owner of the property, uh, you know, indicated that everyone would pull up into the driveway. Well, you saw that there is no driveway. The only parking space is a garage, and they took out the original side, other parking pad, which had a gate in front of it, wooden gate, to make it, you know, available for childcare. So there is literally no parking on the property. Now. You didn't hand these out to yourself. These are their properties.
We are about at three minutes, so.
Okay, that's fine. Those are their properties, and if you want to look at them individually at some point, part of the public record, you can see there, there is information and aerial showing the fact that all of them, all of them have at least four parking spaces on a parking lot. Two of them, I believe, have turnaround drives in them, the properties are so large. Most of them have, if they don't have two-car width parking going to the back of the house, they have, one-car parking go back up, they have two-car parking going all the way up to the house, and they're on large lots, okay? So that's the next thing. And the third thing, and the last thing is, this, you know, this is a residential neighborhood with residential owners. This is not an area, even though if they got, you know, to grant this, it's a business owner who owns the building, puts their employees in, of which they have fifty, they say, and then have other employees live in there. That's what it is. It's a business, and the house almost isn't big enough to supply the available space inside for the kids if there's twelve of them in there, according to the licensing requirements, okay?
Okay, thank you. We've had over three minutes. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Emily Smith. I live at one eight five two Mortenson, which is, um, two houses just north on the same side of the street of the proposed daycare site. on the same side of the street of the proposed daycare site. Uh, no pitchforks or torches here, just significant concerns. Um, as a parent, I deeply understand the need for daycare. Um, this is a center, it's seven to 12 kids, doesn't significantly change the landscape of daycare lacking availability in this area. So I'm not sure that that's a viable argument, given all of the significant concerns of the nearby residents. Um, I think we've talked about parking, so I'm not gonna beat that horse. But I think I really wanna call out the safety concern. Uh, I don't feel safe getting in and out of my car if I'm parked on Mortenson during busy times, you know, with people rushing up to the high school, to Rogers, just trying to get to work. I, I don't, as an adult, feel safe getting in and out of my car. And I certainly don't do it when I've got kids and diaper bags and, you know, all kinds of other things in my arms. So whatever happens, I would encourage you to be, make sure you've got a safety plan for your families that may or may not be trying to get out, in and out on a very, very busy street. I get buzzed regularly by other cars when I've tried to do it. I have delays being able to pull in and out of my driveway at these busy times. So there's definitely a congestion issue already. Um, and people drive down the street regularly 25, 30, 35, 40 miles an hour. So it's definitely a safety concern today. And I would be concerned if I was a parent trying to get my children in and out of the car safely, especially on Mortenson. Um, I do have some concerns about the maintenance of the property. I think when you're, you know, an employee living there versus, you know, a family of any makeup, um, I think you don't have the same skin in the game as the other neighbors. We all live in Berkeley, because we have the expectation with the current land use that we will be living next to other families and residents on the property. Um, not a rinse and repeat business. I, I don't, uh, you know, I appreciate the, the goals of the business that, um, that they're talking about, but I just don't think it's the appropriate place for it, given the size of our lots, the limited parking, the congestion, and the traffic. Uh, I also have some noise concerns. I think those are, are a little bit secondary to the, to the safety and congestion issues. It's just the, the expectation that we all live next to families that have the same vested interest in the, the community that we've built versus a business, no matter how good and how many rules they're following, it's just not, not the same as what we all moved into, to be living there. So thanks for the time, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
I'm Brad Davidson, 1834, so I'm right next door. They seem like nice people. I'm a teacher myself. I teach elementary school, so I know all about kids. I have two young kids. Emily and I are pretty much in lockstep, but yet I'm not here with a pitchfork either. I have two little kids, same thing. I don't let them near the street. I've had my mirror sides wiped off. It's not an ideal place to be dropping off kids on Mortenson. I also, you know, one of my concerns is, you know, as a resident, I moved here specifically for my family, for the communities, for the people around. I like to enjoy my backyard, hearing seven to five. I have my whole summers off. I mean, that's a personal issue, I understand that. The idea of the noise and having up to 12 kids at all times next to my house, to me, that's very concerning. I do really worry about the lot size. I mean, my two children can barely play in my own backyard, let alone 12. And there's a very large deck that's in the back. Sure, it's probably gonna be ripped out. But that's another one of my concerns. The noise, the constant drop-off, the, starting at 7:00 AM, ending at 5:00, from people going back and forth, doors opening and closing. I take my kids to childcare. Um, I, I do agree, I, I'm supposed to pick my kids up at certain times. It's a pipe dream. So that doesn't always happen. One of my biggest issues, if I'm being honest, is when I met your husband, he came over and we talked. And he told me, you know, I'm like, "Oh, what are you thinking? Are you moving in?" And he's like, "No." He's like, "But we've already got a family lined up, and they're gonna be moving in." Family of four. I was like, "Oh, yeah." And the reason I was concerned is, the guy who was putting in the fence didn't have any water at the house, so he came over and asked me if he could use my water to help sink the post with cement. Because I do feel this is a strong community. I said, "Sure, it's middle of winter, I'll turn the water on for you. He sinks all the pipes." And I said, "Oh, you know, are, are you gonna live here?" He's like, "No." I do fences for him, though, and he's gonna, he's like, he does daycares. And I'm not trying to fill the fence behind your bus, because this is not him. And that's when my radar went up. So when I met her husband, you know, we talked, and he told me that, I was like, "Okay, I'm renters, I'm fine with that." But that was kinda like my first bit of anger, is when I felt that that was not truthful the whole time. Um, we have somebody that's moving across the street. He straight up said, "Yeah, I'm gonna flip this house." And we're like, "You know, I can get it, this is business." So on top of the parking concerns, the noise, the size of the place, the fact that there's just a bunch of families living around there, and our kids play together, I just don't really feel like I want a business being on that corner, especially with all the traffic and the noise and the amount of people coming back and forth. So I just hope that we can keep Berkeley kind of where the family are and a place that we chose to move into. So I hope you hear our concerns and think about them.
Thank you. I have someone else coming up.
Sorry, I was slow.
No.
Hi, I'm Emma Velasco. I'm at 2076 Cambridge. And I don't really have a dog in this fight, except I'm trying to figure out if this is the reason that the signs for a variance hearing were posted. I'm at Cambridge and Henley. So the, there were signs posted at Henley and Eleven Mile, where drought is standing empty and the gas station is standing empty. And, you know, Jess, who's on the council, is like our neighbor. And we're like, "Can you find out what's going on?" So that's how come I came into the meeting, to find out if there's a variance going on for those spaces, or if that was about this daycare issue.
So we generally don't go back and forth?
Sure, thing.
Um, but because this one's a super easy one, those were at the ZBA, and those were at the ZBA's last meeting. Um, it was, there was something on the gas station and something for parking for drought. So that's not something that we hear. We don't hear variances. The ZBA hears variances.
Okay. Lord, thank you for a straight answer after the fact.
Hi, my name's Erin Colby. I live at 1785 Mortenson. And I'd already sent a couple of comments and email, and I just wanted to stand up here today and speak about it, too, that, you know, I stand with our neighbors, and some of us have talked about it. And I think, you know, even she said it best, that she's running a business. And I moved to Berkeley three years ago for the community. I moved into a residential neighborhood to live in a residential neighborhood. And the idea of somebody running a business across the street from my house, with, you know, there's a lot of daycares in the area. My children go to one in Huntington Woods. Um, I, you know, I just share all the same concerns. And again, I just, the, it's not a homeowner opening, running a daycare. It's a business owner placing employees in a residential neighborhood to run a business.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Baransky. I live at 1833 Mortenson, across the street from the property in question. Um, a lot of my concerns have already been echoed here tonight. Our area of Berkeley is very densely populated in terms of cars and people. And, um, I think this is just gonna add to existing problems and infringe upon the few rights that the residents in the area have or the abilities that they have in terms of parking and things like that. My biggest issue is parking and pickup in general. She just described a scenario where there's an on-staff teacher, two other staff, plus a center director, who's on-site most of the week. I believe that's what I heard you say. So that's even more parking concerns in addition to deliveries or other ancillary business, things that need to happen. Like I said, I won't step on what my other neighbors have already said, but I strongly agree with them. And I'm not sure why you'd wanna introduce yourself to the neighborhood this way.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we did have, um, public comments via email. Um, this one is from, oh, see, I'm gonna mess people's names up. Liz Riosti? I'll just ugly pronounce them. Who had concerns with home daycare. Concerns were increased traffic, maintenance of property, and character of area, the traffic. Do, 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 also doesn't like the idea of the business operating in residential. Emily and James Smith, I think we heard from Emily. Parking, traffic, safety, maintenance of the property, character of the area, and property values, and noise. You made that really easy to summarize. Most of which I'm not gonna re-go into, because I think it follows what we've heard. Erin Colby, who we also heard from, um, in real life. Pretty much goes over the same thing, traffic, um, neighborhood. Jennifer, who we also just heard from, um, parking, for-profit business, um, traffic with the narrow boulevard, and parking updates for care staff. Luke Orlands, uh, gave the other half of the petition that I have here. And, uh, was also not in favor, and kind of point by point, dealt with the standards. And that had, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 signatures on that petition. But most of it seems to be the same concerns. Maria LaCombe is also opposed. Talking about how it's a calm and quiet neighborhood. Okay, and if no one else is running up, this is your last chance. I am going to close the public hearing at 8:23. We can start discussion, or if you have any more questions.
I, I guess I'm still... Kristen, do you think that it would serve any purpose to maybe have a legal opinion or the city attorney at a meeting to help us understand the history involved in, um, his conclusion that we should treat it as a special land use?
I don't think so. I had a pretty extensive conversation with him. This is, I've been in this role for a couple of years now. I have not been presented here in Berkeley with this sign-off from the state request. Um, the, the zoning administrator, who was previously the building clerk, hadn't seen that before either. There, there is absolutely the possibility that those requests have come through to previous community development directors, and they signed off on them without consulting this to the attorney first. He didn't have any knowledge of this question being posed before. So I think he's, he's giving a very conservative opinion.
And I don't want you to share attorney-client privileged communication, obviously, but I, I almost, I, I guess, personally, I, I think I would prefer to understand that history without having you disclose attorney-client privileged communication at a public meeting.
Yeah.
And by history, you mean the general history of how this is operated in Berkeley? Or do you mean the general history of childcare centers, in-home daycares? The specific address?
In Berkeley, and as it relates to this property.
Okay.
So with Laura, I, I mean, when I was peek, poking around on there, it's you have your 1 to 6, and you just apply with them, and you're all done. If you want the 7 to 12, you have to fill out, and I don't know how new that is or is not, but you have to get a zoning approval from the city...
Yeah.
...in order to move forward.
Which is the one we were asked to...
Right.
But my understanding is, our zoning ordinance was lacking.
It doesn't, it doesn't specifically call out this group daycare home as either a principal permitted use or a special land use. It only talks about childcare centers.
And it doesn't mention anything about numbers, enrollment numbers?
Unfortunately, no.
And she's open to other businesses in other cities. She knows this role.
I, I...
I had to say it.
No, it does not mention any of that. So if the commission wanted to table this for an attorney opinion, you could certainly do that. I'm, I'm sharing the conversation that I had, but if you wanted more information, it, it might be good to have, um, a DHL or something more specific, just so I can make sure I'm getting the commission exactly what they're looking for.
But, and I guess, Commissioner, if, if we did get that more, more information, would it change their opinion to treat this as a special land use?
That's where I was curious.
That's what you're curious about, okay? Because what's the other option? It's just not even a possible use at all?
In this district, maybe...
I, I think that it has to be an allowed use.
Okay.
I think that the city...
For 7 to 12?
I thought it had to be an allowed use. And Megan, you might have some information on this.
I mean, as either a by right or a special land use, right?
It's gotta be...
Yes. Yeah. Megan Masimov, I'm the planning consultant for the city. And yes, the group daycare homes, so 7 to 12, are regulated by the state and also have certain exemptions in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. So 1 to 6 is treated as a residential use. So i.e., when you have a single-family house, a residential use, if you're allowing that single-family dwelling, then you have to allow that residential use of 1 to 6 in terms of, I think it's called a family daycare home. And then, and then by state law, it's either, the city has a choice as to whether to treat it as a special land use or as a permitted use. I think what your attorney did is had, made an interpretation, since you had a vague definition, that, that childcare center incorporated 7 to 12, the 7 to 12 group daycare home definition by Laura. And those, and Laura's definitions are different than your zoning regulations and what you're looking at or what your zoning regulations are. So if you have questions about the zoning regulations, it would be appropriate to go back to the city attorney, but I think you would have to specifically ask what it is. And then, I think Commissioner Bartis raises an excellent point, is how would that information change what your decision was? And it seems like for some of you, it might just change the, the parameters of the decision.
Yeah, um, for me, getting some information with regard to maybe the timing of the applicant's initial contact with the city, um...
I, I can ask our staff. I don't know that they wrote down each and every call that they took.
I'm not asking you to do that. And I'm trying to articulate my position. I'm used to being the attorney who gets to talk in attorney-client privileged communication, and so that's my struggle right now, is, but, um, I, maybe I'm the only person that has those concerns, in which case it's a mood issue.
Yeah, I guess what I'm interpreting is, it's either special land use or it's by right. We can, it, it has to occur no matter what. Like, it, it's part of the zoning enabling...
And our city attorney has concluded it's a special land use, and I would not challenge him on that. And I'm not asking that he come in here and defend his opinion. But I was curious, as far as the timing of this whole process, had there been a previous interpretation? Did the applicant do or do diligence prior to purchasing the property? I mean, those are all things, to me, that would weigh, um, I would wanna factor into my decision, but maybe it's just me.
So we have childcare centers as a special...
So we have childcare centers as a special land use in single-family. Do we have any other parameters around that, or is it just like, yeah, sure, put a childcare, I mean?
No, it has to have an obscuring area around the outside. I don't know if you remember, but a few years ago, the planning commission did look at updating the regulations because there were specific things that called out so much outside area. And the amendment ended up deferring to the state standards. So really, it's screening around the outside area and then deference to the state in terms of the amount or square footage of outside area that has to be. If this were a childcare center for greater than 12 children, partner requirements would come into play. But since the principal use of this would be a single-family residence, partner requirements do not come into play for this. It's treated as a single-family residence with the added use of the group daycare home.
And there's nothing anywhere that, because they're not the homeowner. They're essentially the landlord. They're essentially running a business. That has no impact on the.
So I looked at Laura, and I actually reached out to our attorney because I had some concerns about that. Because Laura says that it has to be someone residing in the home, that it's not contingent upon them caring for children. And based on what I could see from the business model, I had questions as to whether that's what's happening here, right? Because in my brain, it's like, yes, I have a home. It's big enough. I can, you know, take in 12 kids and, you know, so I'm reaching out to my friends, my family. This is a much different model. But I think the. And he said that the key there is that, is it contingent? Which is why I asked all those questions in the beginning. Because if what she said is now, if the teacher said no, then they were out, then I would be like, okay, then we can stop this conversation because according to him, then it wouldn't be a private residence in this instance, and we could be done. Those weren't the answers I got, so.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
My understanding is it's just like, there's a lease agreement, and so it's just like the tenant having the business. And she is just the landowner. And the tenant is the licensee and the, running the business. Because she's technically living there.
We can't do this, please. I cannot do that. The public hearing has already happened. You both already spoke. And I'm not trying to be mean, but like, you've had your time, and this is our time to discuss now.
And so Laura, Laura only specifies the actual physical grounds of the business, not the incorporation of the business operations into, I guess, the. In this case, it'd be the neighborhood, but into the local municipality in general, right? So it doesn't care if it's on, you know, in the middle of, you know, in a different neighborhood than it is now. Or if it's on a boulevard or a regular, you know, minor arterial or subdivision street, so. So that's what I just wanted to confirm, that that's. Even though something is approved through Laura, through the licensing, the state licensing process, doesn't necessarily mean it's a fit for a community.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Can you come back up so she can ask a question, please?
In something I read, the materials that were distributed today, it said that you, the children that you care for are 12 months? 12 weeks to four years old?
Yeah, typically, within the communities that we serve, the children go to preschool. So it's really from three months old to three years old. By three, they're looking into preschool, and now there's universal preschool. So by four, they're no longer with us.
So my question is, then by four, do they have to leave? Is it a limit, or if somebody just?
So if we have a four-year-old that wants to stay in our care and they're, I mean, typically because it's multi-age, we encourage them to look for preschool options.
What about in the summer, when there is no school?
Yeah, we don't do, we have, we have, you know, we enroll children for 12 months a year, and that enrollment's pretty solid. So typically, we take them as infants, and then they cycle through to preschool, and that's it.
But, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around it. So you have a preschooler, and the preschooler has three siblings. And in the summertime, when school's not out, life would be so much better for mom if she could take all three to your facility.
Absolutely, but we have, we have a capacity, and that's licensed. You know, that's a licensed capacity, so we can't go beyond that, and we take that really, very seriously.
But if you had vacancy, if you had the room? You would take any age?
No, we wouldn't, because it's multi-age and the dynamic of the group is so important. When families come and interview with us, we have them bring their child, especially if their child is like a toddler. Like, let's say we have an opening for a toddler. They spend the day with us so that we can make sure that everyone, you know, it's a good fit. It's a good fit for us. It's a good fit for the family. But an older child in a mixed age setting wouldn't be a great fit.
Have you ever had to deny someone because their child was too old or just not? It wasn't conducive to the environment you were trying to create?
All the time. Absolutely. You know, it has to be a good fit for the child. We want them to be successful. So, you know, multi-age settings are great for some children. Centers are great for some children. It just depends on the needs of the child.
So where would you have the employees that are there, right? So if you have 12, what's, do you know off the top of your head what your ratio is?
Right, we have to have two employees there at any given time if we have all 12 children there. So one to six ratio.
Even if there, even if you have lots of babies?
So we only enroll for infants at any given time for that reason.
Gotcha. Okay. So where would you anticipate those two people would be?
So we would have one in the garage and one on the driveway. But, so when we, when we did the fence, we were told that the street parking would be fine. So we did, we did take that piece of the fence out that gave backyard access because we were told that people could park on that boulevard. But I suppose we could, I mean, if that's something that the city would like us to look at, we could definitely take a look at fencing options to, you know, extend the driveway. On the pictures that you were given, the aerials of our other properties, if you could see what we started with, especially Beverly Hills, which is a smaller house than we have here. If you could see initially, the driveway was like two tire marks, right? Like the, or two, you know, pieces, slabs of concrete that you like drive on with your tires. And now we expanded the driveway and we pulled it back. And so, you know, I wasn't kidding when I said that this has a strong philanthropic thread. The money, any profit goes back into purchasing more homes, paying our staffs because it's more expensive to replace them than to pay them a good livable wage. And improving the property. Our properties have improved substantially from when we purchased them. And they're, they are beautiful properties. And if I could just make one more comment, and, you know, that, I just want to say, like, there is a huge need for childcare in the area. I see it every day. We have enormous waitlists. And a lot of the population is coming from Royal Oak, Berkeley, Huntington Woods. But communities, and I know, you know, that that's the point of everyone being here today. Communities need to make space for the oldest members and the youngest members. And both sides, I mean, I'm not in elder care, but there's a huge need for more elder care group home facilities, and there's a huge need for more childcare. So I hope that, you know, everyone understands that, you know, whatever decision is made, that there is truly a deep need for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think for discussion, I, there's a couple of points that were brought up, maybe we can run through. That I guess I would want to speak on and see other thoughts.
Okay.
So maintenance of the property. It does sound like investment goes into the properties. I think maintenance of the property probably has nothing to do with a special land use permit or special land use here, because it's, to me, it would be treated like any other citizen that has a house that's, gets overrun, too tall of grass, or, you know, or whatever. Like, probably not really connected to the use, in my opinion here. The safety aspect, I think parking is allowed on Mortenson, as far as I know, like on-street parking. I think that's also not necessarily a concern that should be linked to the permit where people are dropping and picking off, picking up people, per se. Because it's, again, it's a single-family house primarily with a special use, and it's going to look like a single-family house still. So those concerns are with any single-family house, I would say. I think on the noise, oh, go ahead.
I would, I mean, I would push back on that one a little bit. Because it's not acting as a single-family house, right? It's acting as a daycare in this instance. So you're having much more in the way of drop-off and pick-up, right? Nobody's showing up at my house at like eight o'clock in the morning and five o'clock at night every single day with eight different times with children trying to get out, right? And carriers, especially when we have two, we have a toddler we're trying to get out, or the car seat and a carrier we're trying to get out and drag it up. So I think there's a little bit more to play in the safety there.
Somewhat. I live next to an elementary school and on a boulevard street, and I will say, you know, the safety is the concern of the person parking there on their own, not necessarily of the use of the property. And me as a neighbor, I'm, you know, you gotta look out for yourself if you're parking there. The noise piece, I guess I would consider noise. It seems like this is an infant daycare, honestly, if it's a 12-month enrollment. And yes, you have to go to kindergarten and now preschool, so it's probably not too noisy. But it would most likely be handled by all their nuisance laws, I guess, regarding noise, I would think, as any other neighbor. If it's too noisy, complain. If you have a noisy neighbor now, you would complain and code enforcement would come out, right, and check that. The size of the house, I think, must be regulated by Laura. All of the sizing and number of spaces. I don't know if that's something that we particularly comment or factor into this, per se. And then the traffic. I guess I agree with staff's thought. I don't personally see this as a large traffic concern from how many vehicles it's generating and like the number of trips that are coming to and from there. And it's, it's under 12, and I think that's the threshold, like, with, for the onsite parking piece of it that Kristen mentioned. Where it is required to be looked at. So I guess I'm feeling a lot of these concerns are really valid. I'm not sure they're under the full purview of the special land use. It seems like Laura handles quite a few of these, or code enforcement. Let alone the business part as well. I do think, Chair Comptender, you mentioned like it's a homeowner versus like a home owner with a renter. I don't know if that's our business to get involved in that piece of it, per se. I mean, I understand the concern, but, I mean.
Well, and according to, according to our attorney, it would have become our business if.
Be careful what you say about attorney-client privileged communication.
That it, based on the way the law reads, right? And the ordinances for this designation. It would have become our business in determining whether it was an actual private home if living there was contingent on caring for children. And so in that matter, that part was. After that, since that has been explored and is not the case, or it's on the up and up, I guess. Now, you know, whether it's a renter there doing it or whether it is a homeowner doing it, yeah, like then.
So those are my thoughts on some of the feedback and communications that we've received. And sort of weighing, again, the special land use recommendation to city council, essentially.
So is that the same as going, were you referencing also the point-by-point for?
I wasn't. I wasn't. I was just kind of going through like these, like, higher-level concerns.
Because I think a lot of those concerns actually can be applied to these points, if we want to go by, we're ready to do that one by one.
Sure. Everybody cool with that? Does anybody have something else to say? The proposed use will promote the land in a social and economically desirable manner.
Yeah, I kind of struggle with this one. You know, again, socially and economically desirable. Economically desirable for who, really? You know, socially, again, a lot of, a lot of opinions on, you know, this type of use. Looking into that neighborhood, that part of Mortenson and Princeton. And as someone who lives around that area, I can attest to the various issues associated with traffic, density, congestion, and most of all, safety. So I kind of struggle with that one.
I'm there with you on that, too. I, I agree that childcare options are in need. And I love kids, right? I'm wrangling 45 of them in a theater program right now, every day. I love them and want to strengthen them all at the same time. I don't know that I would want to listen to 12 children next door to me every day. And I don't know that that would make my home economically desirable.
Yes. I agree with staff on this one. The use does provide a childcare option while still maintaining its single-family characteristics.
I agree with that, too, because it's, it's still a home.
With a lot of kids.
Anything down there?
Yeah, I'm kind of with you, Lisa. I have some concerns with the noise and the traffic. And just general craziness at those times of days. With the kids leaving and people going to work and it's busy. And, you know, there's something to be said that if you buy a house next to a school, you know you bought a house next to a school. But if you buy a house in the middle of a block with no school around it, you don't expect there to be 12 kids yelling and crying and getting picked up and dropped off and their siblings and.
And just to put a finer point on it, that's actually a really good, what you mentioned, Lisa. It is still a single-family home, but does it act like a single-family home? I think that's the other issue that I have with it. Yeah, I mean, in the academic sense, it's single-family, but, you know, the activity certainly doesn't fall under that category for most single-family homes.
Can we talk about it? I'm sorry we're hijacking you.
No, we're fine.
Because I guess my thought on it is it is a single-family home with a lot of kids, but for the pickups and drop-offs twice a day. Right?
Well, twice a day times eight-ish. You know?
Right.
So.
Right.
Right.
What, eight, I'm sorry, eight-ish, eight kids, or?
No, she said it generally ends up being, like, eight families.
Oh, gotcha, 'cause they're siblings. But then there's also the, the one, possibly two, possibly three employees that are coming and going, too.
That's true.
Kristin, remind me, do all the factors have to be met on a special land use?
Yes.
Or just considered?
They all have to be considered, and in your motion, approval or denial, you can pick out which factors you wanna...
So it's not all?
You should consider all of them in your approval motion. If you're recommending approval, you should consider all of the factors having been met. If you're recommending denial, just like with the ZVA variance, you could say, only because of this one factor.
Right.
And then, of course, approval or denial recommended, it would still move on to city council, and they would be the ultimate arbiters of, of the decision.
Oh, I didn't realize that. So if a special land use permit is recommended for denial by planning commission, it too goes to city council?
Yep.
We're just recommending what we think they should do.
Right, but in some communities, a recommendation of denial dies there, and they only appeal at the circuit court. And so that's why it wasn't clear on the... Okay.
I didn't know that either.
I have a, one other question, too, just for us to consider. Taking out the location factor, is the R, does that change the thought regarding any R-1-D property? 'Cause that's where I'm struggling. Like...
You mean, like, if it was anywhere else but this location?
Right. To what extent is the context of the surroundings impacting the, on the surface, the process of the special land use?
That's a good question.
Wholly, in itself? Because if it would be approved somewhere else, based on the process that we have in front of us...
That's a good question, that's a good point. I guess what you're saying, are we opposed to this use?
Right, right.
Well, we don't really have a choice
Right, right.
Under the law.
But you should be looking at it singular to this property.
Contextually, yes, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question. The, the, is, how important is the context overall?
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause that, otherwise it'd be just prescriptive, right? If we didn't take into consideration the location, I mean, that's what this is about.
This is seven to twelve children in a single-family neighborhood, and therefore, I think the impacts are too great because it's in a single-family neighborhood.
I think that's his point, making us look at how our, how we feel.
What if it was just right on the corner on Eleven Mile?
Because if, if we have...
If it was right on the corner of Eleven Mile, it'd have the same issues, right? If it was somewhere that, I think corner properties are just hard anyways, 'cause they generally have, like, nothing for a driveway, already making, like, staff parking difficult. But, you know, I, I think there are places that, you know, driveways are longer, you could be pulling in and out of a driveway, or if it wasn't such a busy street, like, not every street in the city is busy. That one just has, like, the perfect mix of the high school and Rogers and some middle school, it's, it's like...
And, and let's face it, people use Princeton as a cut-through all the time, to avoid Eleven Mile.
Yes, I try not to factor the idea that there's speeders and cut-throughs, 'cause that can change, no matter, like, that, that can definitely change based on what's going on in the surrounding network.
I really do appreciate your, your comment, because it does make you take a step back and say, am I opposed to this use altogether? Or is it about this parcel? And I think that's something important to think about. Because if it's altogether, well, then we have an issue, because it's legal, you have to be able, if it's...
Right.
But if it's about this particular parcel, then that's a different story.
Yeah.
I mean, I, personally, I think a boulevard, for the reasons articulated by staff, is a good place, generally, for something like this. I'm not saying Mortenson at Princeton is, I'm just saying, generally, that would be a factor, I think, favorable.
All right, do you want me to go through the rest? We started with one standard, and we kind of, like, mushed around a bunch of other ones. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. I mean, I feel like this goes into what we were literally just looking around.
It looks like a duck, but doesn't quack like a duck, kinda thing.
No.
Okay.
If we have a question for you, then, sorry.
We were on number two as well, right?
Hey. Oh, you're right, I did not do the proposed use as necessarily...
She doesn't like that one.
The public, or proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at that location.
I mean, yeah, that's like the...
I mean, I feel like this applies more now than it did in the last one.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with the statement here.
I guess I'm curious, so, it seems like, through the state of Michigan law, kinda looking up the zoning one, and then there's, like, a Childcare Act nineteen seventy-three. It seems like that it's kind of like daycare uses, or this kind of level of daycare, is kind of still special, and kind of treated outside of a normal business? So it seems like, kind of like, to Joe's point of, like, it almost really, for all intents and purposes, is just a property. 'Cause if it was one through six, there would be, that wouldn't be here either.
Right.
The other thing I'm curious about, too, is, based on the zoning application, is this, it says something about special use permit? Is that what this would be? Okay, I just wanted to clarify with that, then. 'Cause I didn't know if that was even something that we needed to weigh in on.
Special land use permit, special use permit?
Okay.
They're different terminology, but mean the same thing.
Special use permit, conditional use permit, or other similar permits?
Conditional use permit is something different.
Ours doesn't have the word permit after it, right here, it just says special land use, so...
Right, I'm just curious, just based on...
There's a lot of different ways to say the same thing.
Right, 'cause it seems like, once it goes past twelve, then it's, like, in a commercial space. But, you know, and then one through six, there's nothing from a special land use case, but the seven through twelve is the great area.
In the home, as opposed to in a commercial space.
Right.
'Cause I think you can hit, like, three in a commercial space, it's not in your home, and it's, it's that designation. All right, does anybody have commentary on the proposed use as a, as necessary for public convenience?
I mean, it seems like it'd be convenient for people that need daycare in the area.
Yeah, like you said, that one's, this one actually makes sense to apply that particular.
The proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses.
I think it's compatible with adjacent land uses. I mean, it has intensity, traffic issues, but I do think it's compatible, it's like, potentially being used as a really big family, right?
It's a lot of drivers.
Yes and no, right? 'Cause there's, like, the drop-off and the...
But I think that goes to the next, I think that goes to the next one, I think, is it a, is it compatible with single-family residential? I mean, that's the whole...
Yeah, I mean, right, I guess the proposed use, I, I would agree, is compatible.
The issues we've been talking about fall within that next one, right?
The proposed use is designed, designed so that public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. And that's where we have a variety of opinions, right?
Right, like, yeah, I, I think it would be.
That one's not so cut and dry, I mean, for me, anyways, the public health part, I mean, I think that someone mentioned it earlier, you have kids in the, you know, outside in the backyard eating. We have a vermin problem in the city, you know, I mean, I don't know how that contributes to public health.
Yeah, but would that stop anyone of our children from being outside eating?
Or my neighbors feeding squirrels?
It wouldn't, but it doesn't contribute to the public health, though, does it?
But it's designed so that it shall be protected, I mean, again, I'm assuming Laura, like, I, I feel like they, they, I, I would hope that all those, those health, safety, and welfare of the children are validated by site. I'm guessing they look at it once a year, maybe, or something, I, I think, I would think.
But I don't know if that's necessarily, I guess, purview of the, the special land use of the area.
Is that written so much as the, the homeowner, or the person that's benefiting from the use, as opposed to the public that's, maybe there's a lot of cars along the road that are parked there, and it's really narrow, and, you know, you can't drive through there safely, or you can't get a fire truck through there safely, or...
And all of those I don't think are a concern, in my opinion.
Not mine either, yeah.
And then there's the proposed use will not cause injury to other properties in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I feel it's not injurious, I guess, in the way that Commissioner Hamamé was, was mentioning on the last one, like, yeah, it's not inflicting harm.
All right, so I think we're at this weird place with this one, too. Someone needs to make a motion.
Chair Comptender, can I just add something to the commentary? So, since this is a special land use, you can put conditions on it. If there's certain items that you're particularly concerned about, and you feel like there's a condition that would help that, if you wanted to say there's no drop-offs on Mortenson or pickups on Mortenson, for example, not suggesting that you oppose that condition, but that's just an example of something that you could do. There are specific things that you wanted to address.
I don't think that the residents on Princeton would appreciate it. I did, I did think about that, 'cause, 'cause it was offered, it, but I don't know that that's an appropriate solution.
Yeah.
It's like, I think, like, we're solving a problem that may not even exist, that's, like, kinda like cart before the horse, sort of thing. We're, we're, we're trying to put a solution first, in finding the problem.
I mean, I, I, I think, for those of us who travel and, and, and around that areas a lot, this is a rough area at, like, school start time, specifically, and even throughout, like, with coming home and after school, and I mean, we'd get some problems with, with parking.
Just with traffic flowing out.
Is it an enforcement issue, though? Right, are people breaking the law? I mean, you know, like, I don't know.
You could put conditions on times for pickup and drop-off. If you are concerned about pickup and drop-offs during school times, you can put a condition, and pickup and drop-offs could, only after four p.m.
Like, I wish I could make it a driveway, but that driveway can't do that, so...
I also wouldn't wanna put a condition that, again, is it solving a problem? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there, you do have that option.
Right.
Yeah, and it's also, I mean, we can write conditions to any circumstance, but I hear a lot of concerns about, oh, the high school traffic and the Rogership. I mean, they're not in school in the summer, so then is the condition only September through May? Like, you know, like, what are we? It, it's, again, it seems like a solution trying to find a problem.
Which, I mean, at that point, the city would have the ability, if it was an issue, to put up
No parking.
No parking signs, or parking only during certain top ranks.
I mean, I don't think that they would...
No, they're not gonna undertake any parking.
Well, who knows what happens when a stoplight goes up there?
They do it around, all the schools have no parking, and, yes, there's time limits, sorry, Kristin.
Not anymore!
The public safety department controls parking and no parking signage, and they do work in conjunction with the school district, and it's based on road widths and what's needed for public safety vehicles. So they wouldn't do it in response to an in-home daycare where we're having the park.
I mean, and nor would staff be able to make that condition up after, after saying yes you could have.
No, you could put in condition no pickups and drop-offs on Mortenson, and that would be a compliance issue. So if people, neighbors, were noticing pickups and drop-offs on Mortenson, they would call
Right.
Code enforcement, we would send a code officer out there to monitor things, and if pickups and drop-offs were happening, well, that starts the warning process and the violation process, et cetera, et cetera. But it would be a complaint-based compliance, yeah.
That you could not do after the fact. I mean, like...
Unless you put that condition on, right, we can't add it later, you'd have to add it now. And council would also have to accept that condition.
Right.
'Cause it's just a recommendation.
I just don't feel comfortable making condition right now, like, for some arbitrary idea.
Right, I feel like that would be a whole session.
Right.
Is there a stoplight going in at Mortenson and Eleven Mile? Was that, somebody made that statement?
So Huntington Woods is working on some crossings along Eleven Mile. They've taken the lead on that, so I don't have the specific information, but it would be near there, yes.
Is that, uh, Road Commission of Oakland County's roadway, Eleven Mile?
No, it's city, and it's split.
It's split?
It's a split, it's a joint road.
That's the border, that's a border road.
Right, but typically, somebody always...
Wouldn't be like a red, yellow, green light, right? That would just be like a blinky pedestrians are crossing here light.
From a partial perspective, that would make no sense.
Yeah, there's a lot going on with the lot, and like, potentially road, I, I've heard, right? Yes, there's a lot, I mean, I mean, and those factors are probably, shouldn't weigh into this, honestly.
The reason I asked is, if, in fact, a stoplight is going at Mortenson and Eleven Mile, that may factor into whether or not no parking signs pop up on Mortenson, because there's gonna be backed-up traffic at a stoplight, right there, trying to get out on Eleven Mile.
So, my understanding of, of the traffic, the no parking signs, where it was pretty much based on the width of the road.
That is exactly right.
It's not about how traffic ends up, ends up.
It, it's...
It's a boulevard there anyways.
The community...
A traffic signal is not arbitrary, a thing that they just, someone just puts up.
Right, there was an engineering study that was done, that looked at the width of roadways, and what was needed for emergency vehicles, and the no parking signs are based primarily on the width of the road.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And, I mean, even just looking at it, there's quite a bit of distance between Scotia and Mortenson. I don't know of, how a dual pair of, uh, traffic signals there would operate.
Yeah, I mean, signals, signals to Mortenson is like a whole thing.
Which, yeah, right, again, I feel like they're creating a solution for a problem that's out there.
Kind of like wandering into future projects. So I guess, somebody needs to make a motion? For approval, or, I guess we're, we're past wanting an attorney opinion, so... Someone, anyone? Can't be me.
Do we need, uh, sorry, do we need to state all those conditions?
I think you can say that you feel like it meets all the conditions.
It would be helpful, if you're approving, you either could state all the conditions and the reasons why, that would be, you know, the most solid motion you could give. But at a minimum, I would ask that you at least say, because this meets the conditions of section one thirty-eight, I think it's six fifty-three.
Yes. Okay, yep, I can, I'll make a motion, make a motion to approve PSU zero-two-two-four eighteen, eighteen Mortenson Boulevard, special land use.
Hold on one second, what?
That should be a motion to recommend.
Oh, motion to recommend approval to city council for PSU zero-two-two-four-one-eight-one Mortenson Boulevard, for special land use consideration, finding that it meets the standards in section one thirty-eight, six fifty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
You call Ralph?
Yes, I certainly will, Commissioner Donlin?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Hamamé?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernstman?
Yes.
Commissioner Woods?
No.
Commissioner Vardis?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair Killen?
No.
Motion fails. So, um, this will have to come back to a future meeting when you have a full commission. Unless someone, you wanna have any further discussion, or anybody wants to make a denial motion, or a motion to table.
Well, I mean...
Does it not go to the council, too?
Well, you, if everyone stays in their, in their, in the space that they're voting now, three, four, three guns, you're never going to have a motion that passes.
Do we have a seventh commissioner who just couldn't be here today?
Commissioner Shap had a work conflict, yes.
Sucks to put it on Josh.
Yeah.
His birthday means I'm gonna miss.
Thanks, Josh. Alright, so I...
It seems to me a, a motion to, I mean, if you wanna, someone wants to make a motion to deny, but it's, it seems to me it's gonna be a three-three anyway.
I would suspect, but I guess if somebody wants to try, they can, or it can just... Do we have to make a motion to postpone it, then, or it's just automatically postponed?
No, please make a motion to table if you don't mind.
Okay.
Or, I can...
I mean, you can try, I guess, maybe check all the boxes.
Yeah. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to deny special land use PSU 0224-1818 Mortenson Boulevard.
Motion to recommend denial for the reason...
Uh, for the reasons of not meeting all the special land use standards as outlined.
So Commissioner Woods, if you could list which one you feel like it's specifically not meeting for a denial motion.
Proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner.
So it would not?
Correct.
Is there any other one, or just one?
Proposed use is necessary for public convenience in that location. Proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. Proposed use, all of them, I would say.
He's saying it's...
To make it easier, all.
Okay.
Alright, is there a second there?
Support.
Kristen, will you call the roll?
Sure, uh, yes.
Alright, so...
This is to deny, yeah.
Yes means do not.
Yes, got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Arnsman?
No.
Commissioner Woods?
Yes.
Commissioner Vardis?
No.
Commissioner Donlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamamay?
No.
Chair Killen?
Yes.
Okay, so you're at the same space.
Alright, so then somebody needs a motion to postpone. Do we, is that a postpone to a date certain?
I, I don't see any reason unless the applicant had a conflict why this couldn't come to the March meeting, but if you just do a postpone...
Okay.
Then, um, you don't need to list a date certain.
Alright, perfect. Somebody make a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone to the March Planning Commission meeting.
Support.
Wait, wait, we just want it open in case there's some conflict.
For the reason, okay. Motion to postpone to a future planning commission.
And you...
Oh, second, sure.
Second that? Do we need to roll call this, too?
Uh, no, you can do a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it won't be postponed till we have a full board for some...
Till we have a full board, so if there's gonna be any absences for the March meeting, you can let me know ASAP. Um, that would be appreciated, and then I would also know for the people that are here. Agendas are posted on the Friday before the Planning Commission meetings. The next Planning Commission meeting date is... March nineteenth. Since the public hearing was already held, this will not be re-noticed again. So we will leave, um, any signage out, but there would not be new notices in the paper, and there would not be new notices mailed.
Um, will...
I have a conflict.
There'll be... Will there be updates on, um...
It's not the normal meeting date. That's why I have a conflict.
Well, it's March nineteenth?
Yeah, it's usually the last.
Will there be updates on the website?
So the only update on the website would be via the agenda that are posted.
Okay. But like, in the urban planning, I think I noticed that something said, like, "Go to urban planning for information," and it wasn't there. So I guess that's my clarification, and this will be fine.
I can make, I can add it to the urban planning page?
Just so that there's some placeholder. I can't remember if the sign said it or the notices said it, I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, it's in, it's there, yeah.
So, Kristen, is this, knowing that I already have a conflict, is this something that we would potentially do a special meeting for? Or would you just go with the six, or however many you have that are available? And I just want to apologize for that, but that's not our normal meeting date, so that's why it's a problem for me.
Yep, um, I think you'd be better off with a full board for this particular item. Um, I'm open to a special meeting, and we could talk to the applicant about potential dates into the commission, maybe later.
Is there, is there a reason we're not doing that following? Was there a reason we moved it?
Sprint break, I think.
Sprint break.
Oh.
Okay, so, um, it has been postponed, and, um...
Kristen will work with the applicant and the commissioners on a new date.
Yes. Okay. Moving on, PSP 0923-27333 to 27387 Woodward Avenue. Yes.
Anything for a break, or anyone?
If we could take a five-minute break, that would be lovely.
This sounds good.
There's only one bathroom up here, let's break the...
Okay. Um, multiple of... I'll call it a ten-minute break.
Wait, we're gonna race?
So, 2127, be back.
2127, sounds good.
So, calling or ending break and calling back to order, the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four Planning Commission meeting, twenty-seven. And we will move to PSP 0923-277, or 27333 to 27387 Woodward Avenue. Kristen, are you ready to give us a overview?
Yes, I'm gonna turn most of this over to Megan, but just very briefly. A community center is proposed, this is in the former wedding shop space, for those that might remember, on Woodward, adjacent to Einstein Bagels. All staff and consultant reviews are recommending approval. There are several items to be addressed in future submittals. Most of the items in, in fact, all of the items in the DPW and HRC reviews would be addressed on construction plan documents in the future. So nothing concerning there about the site plans. Any motions that you make for approval should include a finding that the commission finds the site materials and architecture meet the standards of section 138, 679. And then I'd also ask that you know compliance with the outstanding items in the staff and consultant reviews. And then Megan can give further detail, but there's also the request for a ten percent parking waiver, so that would need to be included in any approval motions as well. I will turn the rest over to Megan.
Thank you. So the applicant's proposing a renovation of a, what's currently now a one-story, ten-foot commercial space, and it's gonna have a building to accommodate a new two-story community center. And the Einstein Bagels will remain, and the addition will kind of almost like wrap around it. There are a variety of, there are three parcels which are in play, two which create a zero-point-three-acre site that runs Woodward. Those are its own Woodward district, and so the uses are allowed in that Woodward district, which are essentially a restaurant. And then the Jewish community center is proposed in this scenario as a service club, fraternal organization, or other recognized special, special interest or group organization use. And both of those are permitted uses in the Woodward district. And then there is a zero-point-three-acre parking lot, and that is its own parking district. So that parking district would allow that parking. But all three are working in concert together. The floor plan for the proposed community center includes a multiple large flex spaces, rooftop area with a bar suitable for events. In that revised submission, this is our second, this is our second review, so a lot of times we refer to a revised submission that you necessarily, you wouldn't have necessarily seen those. Hubert, in that, they have a description of those anticipated daily operations. I'm gonna go over them verbally right now, just because they're asking for a ten percent parking waiver, and you should have these facts in the back of your mind when you're looking at that waiver. And so their typical schedule includes the highest volume of patrons in the afternoons and evenings, with approximately forty-five people expected to be involved in formal or informal program at any given time. And they indicate those programs to be limited to small or mid-sites gatherings. The restaurant would employ three to five employees per shift. The sites poised would host special events, utilize that rooftop area on a weekly or near-weekly basis, ending before ten PM with occasional events lasting until midnight. The applicant indicated the number of participants for special events would generally range from ten to sixty people, but did not indicate that there was an enforceable guest limit. And then also, they said that they wouldn't have simultaneous bookings of the rooftop space and the classroom spaces. So when you look at the building as a whole, you wouldn't necessarily think that the whole thing is built all at the same time. So, and that might factor into how you're looking at the parking. We, we recommend that these policies be formalized and a shared parking agreement as part of the site plan review. Any site plan, any site plan approval. When we look at the surrounding areas, it's either Woodward district that's surrounding or parking district. There is a single-family home and a parking lot that's to the west. But generally, you're not really, it's not really looking to change the character of the area. In terms of building arrangement and site design, we wanted to point out that they are making improvements, and especially along the back in the alley with some landscaped areas and an entrance there, that would contribute to the, that would contribute to the vibrancy of the area. In terms of area width, height and setbacks, everything complies. We have a tactical note that just sheet two needs to be updated to include setback information on the plan itself. Those notes haven't been updated to reflect the adjusted building footprint. In terms of parking and loading, keep in mind that not everything that's listed its uses is listed in the parking table, and this is one of those circumstances. So service clubs, fraternal organizations, other recognized special interest groups are not included in the parking requirements table. So what was used was, it was based on the requirements for a community center. And if you look at our table three, it would go, it goes through how the forty-one spaces that they've provided would leave the ordinance if a ten percent waiver was granted. I'm sure you noticed in your packet, the applicant provided a parking analysis of all three parking areas surrounding the site. So that's the seven on-site parking spaces and the nine on-street parking spaces on Woodward. That's, they concluded that forty-two spaces are available for shared parking use in the proposed community center and the existing Einstein Bagels out of the fifty parking spaces. However, the zoning ordinance does not permit the nine on-street parking spaces be counted towards the subject parking requirement. So even though, you know, a parking study looks at the parking all, all around, you can go there, you see that there are some available parking street, parking on the street, you are not allowed to count that towards that required parking per the zoning ordinance, so that can also be a factor in why you would allow the ten percent waiver if you so choose. In terms of landscaping, they have not necessarily provided a landscaping plan, but as you look and what they've submitted, there is forty-five one-gallon containers of reed glasses, reed grasses and planting boxes and ginkgo trees to provide screening along that proposed first-floor outdoor open space area. There's also an updated evergreen screen consisting of thirteen unidentified plants. We would ask in the final site plan that just the species of those be identified, so that we know what they are. And then also, on sheet C1, it indicates twenty-eight evergreen trees and seven deciduous trees are currently on the three parcels. We have, it's not clear what's, what's dedicated for removal. And also, it looks like some plants which are said as trees, and this is in figure two of our, of our review. You'll see that there's twelve bushes, twelve trees, but really in the aerial photo, they look more like bushes, we're not quite sure what they are. So one of your factors as the planning agency is whether the landscaping is appropriate. But also, if you choose to approve, you just would want these things to be clarified and know what they are and have it identified on the site plan. In terms of site access and circulation, not a lot is, in terms of vehicles, is not, is proposed to change. So they have an entrance off of Woodward Avenue. The, the building for Einstein Brothers, they have an entrance off of Woodward and an entrance off the north side of the building. The community center includes two entrances along Woodward and one from the northernmost flex room and one from the outdoor space area on the western side. That parking area is on the north end of the twenty-seven, three-eighty-seven Woodward Parkville with a one-way vehicle access provided from Woodward, and that goes through that twenty-foot-wide public alley that connects Cambridge and Columbia Roads. So we feel like the proposed redevelopment maintains existing access and circulation in a manner that both enhances and protects the pedestrian and the safety, particularly with that outdoor area that was created to the west. In terms of lighting, we just noted that in the first submission that we looked at, there was additional lighting in the rooftop area, including recessed sidewalk wall lighting, pendant lights, low-profile surface lights. We didn't see those on the exterior lights in the rooftop area and wanted clarification of whether those are removed, or if they're not to be removed, to include those in the lighting plan to make sure they comply with all the city's regulations. There was also a technical detail on the floor plane elevations. The first plant, the floor plane indicates a commercial kitchen and carryout festival, and that has a flat membrane roof overhang. There's another overhang on the southwest building entrance. Both of those are where a zero-foot setback is permitted, but projections can go no more than three feet. We need to know what those projected overhangs are to make sure that they comply with, those, those dimensions comply with the allowed projections, projections. So in final, we recommended that the Planning Commission chooses to approve the plan as presented, that you include the motion to approve the ten percent parking waiver requested, and have the following conditions to be confirmed by the City Community Development Director, that the size and species of the evergreen plants for the transformer screening on a revised site plan. They indicate if any existing trees are dedicated for removal on the revised site plan. And then they clarify the rooftop lighting and that the applicant provide the dimensions of the projection, projections. Happy to answer any questions. Yep.
Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, what was the proposed times that the center would be opening in? You mentioned that, right?
Yeah, and let me scroll back up.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. It was actually, there, there were, okay. So their hours of operation would be ten AM to seven PM, Sunday through Thursdays, ten AM to three PM on Friday, and closed on Saturday. And so, but then there would also be some evening events or special events on that rooftop area, ending before ten PM, occasionally when events lasting until midnight.
Okay. But normal is like ten AM, uh, normal?
Can I clarify that? Is this not part of...
Um...
So this is from, I, I think when the applicant has a chance to talk, that would be absolutely perfect for them to clarify it. This is just what we gleaned from the application materials and highlighting our letter.
For sure. And I will have you come up and give us a spiel in just one second. It's gonna give us a chance to ask questions of staff first, if there are any more.
I, I just, this is just site plan approval.
This is just site plan approval.
So the use itself, it's an allowable use, we're not weighing in on that. We are just weighing in on the site plan and/or everything you've highlighted, but the, the specifics of the plan and parking.
Definitely on parking. I think the specifics of the use can affect maybe your... I think the specifics of the use can affect maybe your decision on parking.
Agreed, agreed. I just wanted clarification on that.
No problem, thank you.
How many spaces is 10%? A 10% reduction?
Five, right? It's like 4.6 or something.
The 10%, it was 4.6, so that's, that we have that as negative four spaces.
So they, not including the nine that are on the front?
Yeah.
So the 41, so like 46 is roughly what would be needed? Okay.
Roughly.
Forty-six.
Roughly, but she explained how she had to come up with the parking calculations because it's kind of a mixed use-type building.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, isn't that...
But they use a community center as the...
Yeah, page four.
So we use the key, on page four, if you look at the table on the bottom, it was one space for 250 square feet usable floor area. So that includes 17 spaces, plus you have the carryout, restaurant carryout of Einstein Bagels. You've got to keep those together, so that's 47 spaces that are required.
Forty-seven, okay.
And then you, well, there was the typo there, but it's 47 spaces times 10%, so that'd be 4.7. Looking at how those are done, you can round those, that's rounded down to negative, so that's a negative four spaces, and then the three bicycle racks, you can reduce by two parking spaces. So when you put those in together, that's six parking spaces, and that would bring you to 41 spaces.
So you came up with slightly different numbers than they did for the parking? Because they, in the J on Woodward, shared parking calculations, there's a, I think this is where this came from?
I think some of it had to do with rounding.
Because they came up with 47 required, 42 with a 10% credit, total provided 43 with two bike racks. But you came up with 41?
Yeah.
So rounding was good.
Or, and I think it's how you count the bike racks.
The bike racks.
It's the same. It's just that they said...
They've provided 43 because of the bike racks, as opposed to looking at it as the opposite, as a credit.
But you're saying they required 41, didn't you?
They're requiring 47.
Forty-seven.
And then we're saying six spaces can be waived. They were saying that they were required...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, and they were saying that 43 are provided with bike racks.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's just like, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, on top of that, though, the nine is just not even part of this at all. So there's also just nine spots on Woodward available.
Nine spots on Woodward available.
That are not, like, provided.
That are not, but the zoning ordinance does not allow us to count as required parking.
Yes, okay. Sorry, can I ask a question on those? I'm not as familiar with that. Are those allowable for anybody to park in?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So they can put up a sign for like, you know, business use only on the Woodward ones? Okay.
So I guess I want to make sure I'm following along. Obviously, my hangup is the parking. But the way I understood the report, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is a unique use in that it has a lot of things going on, with a bar, banquet center, the, you know, all the things that they're offering, which is all great stuff, but hard to pin down to meet a required, to find the required parking in our zoning ordinance. Did I interpret that correctly?
I would say to find the required parking, the parking that's required within our zoning ordinance, and also dealing with the physical limitations of the site. There's no room to add more parking, essentially. So I think your challenge as planning commissioners is to look at the uses they propose, at the hours that they propose, and to assess whether, and look at the parking study that they've been doing, and to assess whether, at each time of its operation, whether it's first thing in the morning, in the afternoon, when they're probably busiest, or at those nighttime special events, is the party, is the, if you give a 10% waiver, is that parking going to be adequate?
I'm going beyond the 10% waiver, and you, you looked at our zoning ordinance and you determined the number of spaces required for a community center.
Yes.
But would you agree that this isn't a typical community center based on their offerings? I guess that's where I was reading this, thinking, well, they're having, they have a bar, they're having a banquet facility, they're having, do all community centers have that? Is our zoning ordinance addressing all of the uses?
It most certainly hasn't, but...
Okay, that's where, I was reading that, and that's how I was interpreting it, but I wanted to make sure that it was a fair interpretation.
That is a fair interpretation.
But you did the best you could to pigeonhole it where it is. I get that.
Yes.
Are there any more questions for staff before the applicant come up? All right, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure, thank you. I know this meeting is long of the tooth, so...
Sorry.
And, no, no, I'm just going to try not to burden you, and you should feel free to ask me any questions you want. I'm the CEO of the Jewish Community Center. We have our architect, John DeBruni, our designer and architect, Ari Green, and our senior director for off-center, Rachel DeVries, who's also a Berkeley community resident living a couple blocks away. So we, the JCC is in the business of community centers. The uses that you see are the things that just come along with it. We're not running a bar, per se, but we have bar operations associated with programs. We have events, we have, we really are in the business of classes, really. And so we have events for cultural things, or we'll have an event for a topic, a political topic, or other things like that. So we developed multipurpose space to fulfill this storefront JCC, which is a community center for programming. And it's, we're very excited about it, and we're excited about bringing it to the community. It's going to be a world-class facility. And while there is a carryout restaurant that faces Woodward, the quick casual portion that restaurant faces inside is really intended so that the people coming for a class can get a sandwich or something else. It's really, it's not really a destination restaurant, although there'll be some people who come in and will choose to use a quick casual side. It's not like a full-service restaurant. So there are elements of commercial functionalities, but they're all part of this larger whole. As it relates to the parking, there are the required spaces, there's the nine spaces that aren't allowed to be counted in the current census. And we did a study, because 22 of the 30 spaces that relate to restaurant-related use or carryout-related uses, some of which are ours and some of which are Einstein, when you, we did the analysis, the most number of cars at the highest time for Einstein was nine out of the 22 spaces allocated to them. And then Einstein closes at 2:00 p.m. So even of the spaces, the nine spaces they're using, they're not really going to be affecting our uses at their highest times. So when we ask for the 10% waiver of the four spaces, there's the, we want you just to consider the nine spaces up front, which are not allowed to be used in your calculation of the spaces available, but are allowed to be considered when you evaluate the appropriateness of the four spaces. And then, and then the fact that the 22 spaces of Einstein's are really only using nine, and even when they are using them, they're closed at 2:00 p.m. when you're barely using the space.
You said we can interrupt with questions.
Of course, please.
I think you raise a good point about Einstein closing at 2:00.
Yeah.
However, it might not be Einstein there forever. What is the relationship? Is there a relationship?
No, Einstein, there's no relationship there. They're a separate tenant of the landlord.
And you're not the landlord.
We are not the landlord, correct. So we're investing in this space to be there a very long time. I think our investment's going to be in the upwards of $5 million into the space, so we're doing that with the intention of being there for a very long period of time and being great community partners. And I just want to make this point as well. Other than the few people who come in to use our side of the quick casual restaurant, all the other programming at our space are all programmed. In other words, if we have a class, we, 15 people sign up for the class, and we have 15 people there. In other words, it's not open to the public come to the class. If we have an event upstairs for 30 people, right, there's going to be an event upstairs for 30 people. It's not an open-to-the-public type of event. So we're very much in control of the operation. And I'll be honest with you, we're in control of the operation for a variety of reasons, including control, security, et cetera, and we don't want to have a parking issue either. So the space is intended to have the flexibility to be able to be used by us for a variety of different uses, all of which go together to create this, we think, a very joyous community center for the Jewish community, because it's the Jewish Community Center, and the larger community, to be a really spectacular space.
I have a question. So the landlord of Einstein is the landlord of your building then, too?
Correct.
And is then willing to sign off on the shared, doesn't it encumber the Einstein build, part, building part?
Yeah. So in the shared parking agreement, they should have a shared parking agreement. One thing that you could ask for is in that shared parking agreement is that whoever took Einstein, if Einstein Bagel's space turned over, you'd have to put a time restriction on when they have access to the parking spaces or their operations. So you could ask that, it be ended at 2:30 or whatnot, in order to make sure the situation that's current is perpetuated in the future.
And they're also going to be sharing, you're also going to be sharing space with the bar?
We don't share space with the bar, that's a separate property.
Oh. So we're just talking about the Einstein parking and then behind your parking?
Correct, correct.
And there's no, is there a reason you're not approaching the bar for shared spaces? Because I presume their evenings are going to be busy, but during the day, it wouldn't...
Right, they're closed Monday, Tuesday, they're not open till 5:00. There's opportunity there, but we are coming to you based on what we control, not based on other people's properties, but I'm certain those conversations will be had.
Yeah, it seems to me that the scheduling would be almost perfect between the two uses on either side, almost would.
Yeah, we agree.
Oh, sorry.
There was, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Would Einstein, I guess, still be able to use some of those spots, like in the back?
Yeah, so it is a non-exclusive use of all the spaces.
I know, from going there before, I've seen, like, you know, larger work trucks or something, you know, park, and it can get a little tight in there with larger vehicles.
Right, so we were interested in all that, because we did the parking study, and there were never more than nine cars there at any one time during the entire traffic study. But there are occasionally other people, because it's such a low-use lot, that people have taken advantage of that parking. Also, the landlord has used that for his offices, that's where it says AFB.
The AFB.
Aaron Bellin, and I think he sometimes uses those spaces. He runs restaurant businesses and all that.
So one of my questions/worries are, and I'm not so worried about parking on the random, you know, big event that you might have, right? Because we don't want to do parking for the Black Friday of a commercial spot. But when I look at the hours of events, I look at like 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and I'm seeing 10, 20, 36, 40 people at 11:00 a.m., and then 40 people at 12:00 a.m. So that 11:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m. time, when people are coming and people are going, you have maybe 80 people there.
Are you looking at this, this...
Yes.
...this schedule here? I, you know what, I haven't done the math exactly, because most of these classes are one hour, so I don't know how the overlap would work that way, but I could just assure you, Rachel's there, we did that together, so if we miscalculated, we would not engineer the classes to create the burden on the parking. We can set the class schedule any way we want. I think someone asked us, hey, what would a typical, what are the events a typical day could look like? And we just put those together, and if our math was wrong, I'll correct that. But we would schedule those classes that way. So if we had a yoga class at 8:00 and we had a toddler class at 9:00 or something like that, and, you know, we wouldn't overburden the parking ourselves to do that.
So when you're scheduling things, events, or classes, or what have you, it would be cognizant of the available parking, you know?
Right.
What I really want, and I'm sure you guys don't want either, is like a Vincetta issue happening, where everybody's parked on the residential street and everyone's very upset.
Yeah.
So...
Which may happen on nights of events.
Right, and occasionally, I think, we can all live with, we might grumble about for that night and move on with our lives, right? It's just when it happens all the time.
But what I, what I would want to say to you, so let's say we had a 40-person event upstairs.
What's your maximum, before you go further with that?
I don't know what the legal fire capacity is, but let's say we had, let's go worse, let's say we had 60 people, then we wouldn't book anything else in the rest of the place. If we had 15 people upstairs for a bourbon tasting, I don't know, maybe that's a bad example, and maybe it's late in the night, that's what I want. But then, then we can have a class downstairs for 20 people and not impact that. So if we have a large event, we are not going to do, put a situation where we're people are going to have a Vincetta situation. That'd be bad for our reputation, and that's not something we would be comfortable doing. In a rare, rare occasion where we're having a larger event, we would have to provide off-site parking. We would not put a situation where we cram people into the lot and hope they spill into the neighborhood. We just wouldn't do that. And we're happy to represent that we wouldn't do that.
Does anybody else have questions for the applicant?
I cut him off, I don't know if he wanted to.
Was there more things that you wanted to tell us before?
Oh, no, I mean, like I said, we're, we're super excited about this. This is, we, even the state has gotten behind the project. It's really going to be a very special project, both for the community and the larger community, and we're going to do it in a way that I am certain you're going to be proud of. We understand the parking dynamic, we control the participation at the place, so we can control that that doesn't become a problem. We're prepared to represent, we don't want it to be a problem with you as well. We will be talking to neighbors about overflow parking, but for the purposes of today, we just want you to consider the four spaces we're asking for in the context of the nine up front and the low usage by Einstein.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the applicant? If we need you again, we'll...
We're right here. Right, thank you.
And when we discuss a parking waiver, we do have standards that we're supposed to look at for parking waivers.
It's, yeah, it's in Megan's report, 138-226.
For those of you at home watching at a future date, that would be current or anticipated levels of employees or patrons, I'm paraphrasing, peak period versus normal usage, banked or reserved parking for future use, opportunities to provide green space or landscaping, valid parking, neighborhood or other surrounding characteristics, strict application would hinder development and an alternative would be appropriate, modification will not negatively impact public parking, and the proximity of the site to public transportation. All right, who wants to start? It could be about parking modification or anything else, whatever.
Was that section 138-218?
Uh, 226.
226.
So, of course, I'll start. Again, parking is my concern, and while I'm not, based on the representations made today and the assurances of scheduling... and the assurances of scheduling to avoid an issue with parking, I would be comfortable with, with the waiver. However, we can't attach conditions to site plan approval, and so there's no assurance that those statements.
You can attach conditions if the applicant's amenable to them. And you're asking, and they're requesting a parking waiver, waiver, so you have that
Oh, the waiver, the waiver part of it.
to attach conditions that would be related to the parking waiver.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I
They just have to be conditions related to like the ordinance, right? Because we always can attach a condition that, you know, they fill out this, or that, you know.
No, I think for the parking waiver, if you're asking for a waiver based on the schedule that they're representing, you can attach conditions that address that schedule. Now, I would ask from a staff perspective, please don't have the condition be, they don't overschedule events, or something so broad that's like
enforceable.
but, yeah, you can attach conditions.
Yeah, I don't know how I would do that, though, to be enforceable. Right, because the way he explains it, okay, that makes sense. He's not gonna schedule events at the same time, and it's gonna limit, it makes sense, it could work.
Is what he said here legally binding?
That's what I'm saying, like, that's the problem.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
You'd have to make it a condition.
Right. But how do I make it a condition and make it enforceable? How do we know what they're doing inside there unless somebody goes in and looks? And we don't wanna do that. I mean, I guess it becomes an issue if parking becomes an issue.
Then we would investigate.
And figure out why parking's an issue, but it's not like you're gonna go out
But then what can you do?
Well, if you had a condition, I'm jumping if I'm wrong, but if you had a condition, like to take the applicant's comments, there was an event for sixty people upstairs. You're not gonna schedule an event for twenty additional people downstairs. Or whatever it is, I don't wanna put numbers into your mouth. But you could attach a condition that said if you had the upstairs at max capacity for the applicant represented as sixty people, then an event with ten people or more could not be run downstairs, or something like that. And we couldn't investigate something like that. I mean, it'd be harder for us to do. But if there were registrations or something like that, that would make it a little bit easier, and I think it'd be worth discussing with the applicant.
Well, to
Well, it's a little challenging to base this on people as well, because
Should be cars.
events are, you know, maybe four, two couples come together in one car, like, you know.
I mean, it definitely would depend on what the event was.
Yeah, like, like
It's a speed dating event, right? And you're probably gonna have individual people.
So I think, number one, if you look at section one thirty-eight, two-two-twenty, two-two-six, which is parking requirement modification, when, in the second paragraph to the end, it says, "Any change in use scope or intensity of the property will, property use will reinstatement application of the parking standard requirements of this chapter." Essentially what that says, if you're going above and beyond what you're represented, your waivers move, you're gonna come back to planning commission. So I think, number one, that can be, that could be reinstated, restated in the condition, because you're in the midst of a zoning ordinance rewrite, so this might change, and it's gonna be better to have that in the next one. Two, I think that you, what you're talking about is the capacity of the
Parking lot.
of the parking lot.
Yeah.
And so that you could put a condition that the applicant, the center shouldn't have any use or combination of uses that would exceed the parking lot. And if that does happen, then they need to talk to the community development department and work out a plan for programming, so that the situation doesn't happen again. I don't think you're necessarily gonna be able, as planning commissioner Homay stated, use conditions to prevent the situation. But I think you can place conditions in order to have a way to quickly rectify a situation if it emerges.
Do we have to, I guess, also take into account, like, the number of spaces required for the Einstein? Because I'm assuming that they also had, you know, originally came in and had those requirements, that they had a need for that.
Yeah, and we, and those were accounted for in our letter. That was the
Okay.
That Einstein bagel was the restaurant carryout.
And, sorry, what was that?
So they're required thirty spaces, based on that square foot.
They're requiring thirty for that?
But now, per the, for what they said, you know, they're currently using nine.
Sure, but I mean, I don't know, I guess, if they have an event that's forty-five people in the morning and take up all the spots, you know, I guess that's the other thing, like, the ten to two is one thing, but like
But Megan's suggestion of the condition exceeding the maximum capacity of the parking lot would catch that.
Can you explain that a little bit more? You're suggesting a broad stroke statement that if the uses at one time exceed the allowable parking?
Available.
Available?
If the uses exceed the
Right?
Right. I would say that in the circumstance that parking is occurring outside of the parking lot due to parking demand beyond, parking demand due to uses at the site beyond the capacity of the parking lot, that the management of the building would need to meet with the community development department in order to adjust program and submit a plan.
But can we even do that if there's a shared parking agreement in here? How do we demonstrate?
That it's them and not Einstein?
Well, and then maybe it's the landlord as well.
And just throw another wrench in that, how do we confirm that the overflow is being caused by the J Center?
Yeah, maybe it's Blarney Stone. They're having a, they're having a Super Bowl party or something.
I think it would be a long time of stop, like, we know Vincetta's overflow, but that's a lot of angst of those residents, I think, before we could definitively go, clearly it's them.
So it would have to be an ongoing issue for it to even pop up on the radar.
Yeah. And there are, and you could just base it on the finding that there's nine spaces available and woodward that are not completed, and you're waiting for, you're waiting for.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I still question whether the forty-one is sufficient for all of these uses.
Agreed. Like, if I'm looking at that in like seventeen spaces, is all
It has to be based on something, though.
And I don't, and I don't fault Megan for doing that.
No.
But it's still in the back of my mind when I'm thinking about, it's only four spaces. Well, if we're already
Right. And I think you're legitimate in that, because when you look at an event that's forty people, and maybe there are classes downstairs, like, if you look at that building and think, oh, you're using every square foot, they're gonna exceed that, they're gonna exceed the capacity of that parking lot.
And how many employees?
Five or six, I think it's, per shift.
I mean, depending on what's going on, right? I'm sure that if you have a
Banquet.
Right? If you have something going on upstairs, a bourbon tasting, you probably might have a different employee number.
The banquet center would cater, though, right? It would be catering, like, it could host a wedding.
Yeah, although it
Could you hold to that?
Yeah, sure, sure. I think it's not, it's a flex space that can be used for events. So it's not our intention to be having weddings there. But if we were to have a fifty or sixty-person wedding, we would not schedule classes that conflicted and burdened the parking. So for my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The conversation, though, that we're having is, if you were having a fifty, sixty person, fifty to sixty-person wedding, you're not just gonna have the guests. You're gonna have caterers, you're gonna have employees, you're gonna have bands and DJs and
Sure, sure. Right, we, we, we would have to make sure that it didn't overburn the parking, right? So that would be our job if we're gonna have a fifty, sixty-person event. But that's, it's not like we're planning fifty, sixty-person events. It's, it's, you know, and if we were to plan something that burned the parking, then we would have to make arrangements to make sure that it didn't spill over into the, into the community, because that would create a problem for us. And we don't have a problem representing that we're gonna operate within the capacity of the lot, right? And make arrangements so that's not a problem for the community. And we have the ability, because we're not running an open, it's not like the Blarney Stone, where two hundred people could show up for a Super Bowl party, right? We don't operate that way. We operate classes and programs like that. And so it would be negligent for us to schedule a hundred-person banquet party without making parking arrangements that would not create that problem. That's not even in our business plan to do that. So, you know, we, we understand, when we chose this particular site, we understood the parking restraints. Leaving Blarney Stone aside, that's a potential outlet for that, an issue which would allow us to schedule maybe more people. But in the absence of that, we have to schedule and live within the allotment of spots that we have. We understand that, and we are making our investments based on the notion that we have to live within the allotment of our spots and schedule to that, to that extent.
So are all of your events, classes, all of that stuff is by registration? Do you ever have something where it's just kind of like people freely walk in to participate in something?
I mean, I can imagine a situation like that, but we would have to deal with those very carefully, right? Because we, we have a restaurant operation there that is a carryout that would use the nine spots up front. People come and pick up a pizza and leave, for example. Then the, the quick casual side, think of it like Subway on the backside, those would be so the people having classic could go up and get the sandwich without having to walk out to the front side on Woodward to get it. So are there people who, from the community, could come off the street and sit in the cafe and eat, and go to the quick casual? Yeah, but it's, it's not like an open-to-the-public thing, per se. Like, we will have some spaces for we work, like, for people to have, you know, coffee and meet with somebody. So those will be in times where we can schedule that, and we would anticipate that and not schedule up against that. So we have a, you know, the vast majority of what we do, the vast, vast majority, ninety-five percent of what we do are scheduled classes with people who sign up, and we register a certain number of people.
Yeah, I think it's very, like, affirmations in Ferndale. It's a space that's like a programmed space. They host, maybe they have galleries. They also have a cafe in there, I think is open to go in. But they're not hosting normally big events in those spaces, you know.
It looks beautiful, and I'm not opposed to the project. My concern is the parking. That's my only concern.
Agreed, agreed. I love everything about it. I'm just trying to figure out, like, we want you to be successful just as much as, you know, like, everyone
Right.
live in peace and harmony over there.
Yeah. I guess, if, if, can we maybe check a couple other boxes off first?
Sure.
So I think the landscaping seemed like, the suggestions to make approvals for the landscaping changes seemed fine, and the renderings looked fine. The lighting, I think, seemed fine.
I mean, I think we were supposed to define things, like, is there, is there lighting still in the rooftop area?
I can address this.
Sure.
Did we get the name, Kristen?
I'll sign at the end. Is that okay?
Yes.
John DeBruni with SDA Architects. The four recommendations that the planner brought up, the evergreen plants, there's a transformer behind the current building that is surrounded by arborvitaries. We've cut back a part of that to make room for the bike racks. The intent is to replant arborvitaries in the spot where we're no longer screening the transformer. So that was just not clarified properly on the plans. It's a housekeeping issue. We'll take care of it. We do not plan on removing any other trees on site, or any other shrubs on site. So the existing parking lot that is behind the building would remain as is. So it's already been landscaped. There's screen walls. It's a great-looking parking lot. We're not changing that. The rooftop lighting, we originally had a switchback egress stairs off of the main roof on the backside of the building. And we realized, before we corrected the plans, that it was encroaching into the setback. So we changed it to a straight-run stairs. So the switchback stairs had a canopy roof over it, which we had some lights in. The longer stairs does not have a roof on it, so we took out those lights. So there's no longer lights on the roof in this project. The fourth item, the projections, they're three-foot projections. They show up on the architectural floor plan, and I know it's kind of lost in that overall design, but we do have three-foot dimensions indicated for those projections. So that takes care of those housekeeping issues.
Thank you.
Thanks. And by the way, the color or material samples for the building are in front, in case that helps at all the the sample is the polymer siding, and that's the prefinished load-bearing block walls. Everything else is glass and prefinished metal, so it's all cohesive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the alley looks really nice. Like, with all, so, noise was the one other thing I wanted to kind of check in on. So there is a house behind the property, and it looks like, I think on the rooftop, right, it opens up to the back? Wait, or this is the back?
Is that the back?
I think this is the back. I guess, just trying to check the box. I didn't see it in, in, in there about any, any noise concerns, and it probably wouldn't have any, but
How tall is that fencing that would be facing west, I guess?
The wall, is it a wall?
On the, on the rooftop.
Oh.
Right here. So the rooftop screening is so that the people using the outdoor deck on the roof cannot see all of the Einstein brothers' rooftop heating and cooling equipment. So that screen fence is just above eye level, so five feet, probably, five and a half feet. So it would be just to a point where it's not enormously tall and obnoxious, but just enough to keep prying eyes from seeing the equipment. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know that I would, I'm terribly concerned about the noise level. I don't think they're gonna be throwing a nightclub sort of thing up on their roof, so.
It's a good point, though. I didn't think about it, to be honest. But is the patio, the patio area, the outdoor patio is facing Woodward, right? Because it looks like, just looking at the elevations, it looks like all there is in the back is the stairs and then wall, right? That face the alley?
Yeah, maybe they can explain it. The, it looks like on the front, there's like garage doors that open up out to Woodward. And then I'm
But then the patio's above that, right?
Right, there's, there's rooftop balcony space, outdoor space, that faces Woodward at the south end of the building. And then a walkway wraps around the west side of the building to a new north deck over the north end of the building as well. So there's, there aren't any walls that block those balconies. The intent is to have that, those balconies be a part of the outdoor experience.
But is there balcony that faced the alley in the residential structure behind you?
There's a deck walkway, yes. And the, the north deck faces the parking lot that is behind the building. And the, the walkway essentially faces that same parking lot as well. So there aren't balconies So there aren't balconies overlooking residential properties. They overlook the parking lot and the alley. They face that direction, yes. They face towards residential, but they don't overlook residential.
It's like more on the north side of the building.
Correct, which is the parking lot end of the building.
Towards Einstein.
What are you picturing going on and, and like on the north deck? Like, would there be outside TV and?
Care to answer?
Which area?
So the, the north end over here.
We don't have any particular intention there, maybe like an outdoor yoga class or something like that.
You understand what we're discussing. We're concerned about noise and the effects of having an outdoor patio to the residential structure. And so we're trying to understand where it's positioned, what might be out there.
Totally understand. It's that part of the deck and I apologize. I'm looking on the, hopefully it'll be helpful to you.
Yeah, the deck here and then the walkway wraps that around.
Got it. And but that deck right there is over the parking lot. It's not next to the neighborhood.
Faces the alley which faces the parking lot, which eventually faces the residential.
Correct, correct.
But hundreds of feet away.
If we were to operate anything up there, I would have no problem putting an awning or a screen or something else if that was a concern. But we don't really have any particular intention.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think we addressed everything in the report, but for the decision on parking.
Could you indulge me in a suggestion, but take it for what it's worth?
But if you, if you guys had something that said, "The ten percent parking wa- parking waiver, recommended parking waiver is specifically subject to applicant's management of its uses within the development, such that its customers are not spilling beyond the provided parking into the neighborhood."
That feels okay to me. I feel the staff.
They have a seventh chair, by the way.
Read it again, please.
Okay. "The ten percent parking waiver recommended is specifically subject to applicant's management of its uses within the development, such that its customers are not spilling beyond the provided parking into the neighborhood."
That.
Yes, that's fine.
So can we add after the management?
Oh, sorry.
After the management's, in the middle there, just add something consistent with representations made at the planning commission meeting?
Yeah, sure. I could, I could say consist, consistent with representations made at.
By the applicant.
By applicant at the, at the planning commission meeting, right?
Yeah, and if you just wanna make that motion.
And then as far as the neighborhood. Okay, so I would, I read it this way. "Consistent with representations made by the applicant at the, at the planning commission meeting, the ten percent parking waiver recommended is specifically subject to applicant's management of its uses within the development, such that its customers are not spilling beyond the provided parking and into the neighborhood."
So the beginning part goes after, before such that?
Okay, let me try and reread it with it in that spot. "The ten percent parking waiver recommended is specifically subject to applicant's management of its uses within the development, consistent with representations made by applicant at the public, at the planning commission meeting, such that its customers are not spilling beyond the provided parking into the neighborhood."
That would be my preference.
Should we replace provided with designated? Cause what does provided mean?
Fine.
I mean, the condition is just, I mean, I don't know. Do we have to get this wordsmithy with it? Or is this giving staff the?
This is, no, it should be what you're comfortable with.
Well, it's still our recommendation. City councils can, no, this is, this is site plan approval.
No, this is the type man.
Same, and you're, you, you, what you decide.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Like, if it's enough for you to be able to do what you need to, like, I understand what we want and do what you need to, then.
Either for a provider designated gives, yes. Oh, so now to do what you need, what needs to be done.
Cause I also don't want to downplay how lovely that was coming to like, that was lovely wordsmithing of exactly what we were trying to get at.
And, um, should we, is like into the neighborhood, I know we are interpreting as Princeton and Cambridge. But this is excluding Woodward, right?
Yeah.
Or Columbia and, uh,
Columbia and Cambridge.
Columbia and Cambridge and Columbia has no parking signs close to Blarney anyways already.
Probably not anymore.
No, I don't know if they're down.
I, I think you could just leave it general.
Just, just neighborhood? Okay.
I agree because it's gonna come to the city by complaints of the neighborhood residences. And that's how we're gonna be alerted to an issue.
Right, and it won't be from somebody on Woodward.
Yeah, unless it's over parking and other commercial properties.
But they're gonna have, they're gonna have private agreements that they're gonna have to hash out among themselves.
Yeah, that's true.
Right, I mean, if, and.
Right, like.
If Blarney's, if people are parking at Blarney Stone, since we keep talking about them. I think Blarney Stone has the right to have them towed or ticketed or whatever it is that Blarney wants to do. All right, um.
I'm very close to finishing typing this.
I have a question on the, the parking. Yeah, sorry. But just with the Einstein, so like, does that change anything from what their use was when they originally came in? You know, like.
You included Einstein at its required parking spaces.
Yes.
Right.
Period. In that calculation that we are looking at.
But you said it was like thirty, based on the, right?
That's based on the general use, not Einstein.
Just so you know, it's technically twenty-two in eight of our restaurants and twenty-two of their restaurants. I'm sorry, didn't mean.
Okay, so I was just, I didn't know if that had like any impact or impact on, I know it's the same, like, I guess, landowner. So I don't know if that would, you know, they would have to come in to, would they need some sort of variance, parking variance based on, right?
No, so if the, so if Einstein Bagels turns over and it turns over to the same restaurant, type of restaurant use, then it would still have the same parking, it would still meet the same parking requirements. If it turned over to something, let's say, a beauty parlor, um,
Right, it would have a difference.
Then staff would evaluate it and likely, you can tell by everybody's sniffers, that it wouldn't meet the parking requirements because, um, because that's one of the greediest parking requirements in Berkeley zoning ordinance. But staff would evaluate that and then, and then when they got their business license and then communicate back to them whether to meet or not. So Einstein's parking is protected and made whole and not threatened. And then if it was turned over to the same use, they would be in the same situation. If it went to a different use, staff would evaluate it and that's on a case by case basis.
So Einstein, the footprint building of Einstein has twenty-two parking spots attached to it in assets, sort of.
Within this pool, right?
Within this pool and shared parking agreement, right? So anything that filled it, that used up twenty-two spaces is good, right? Because we are giving this one the waiver, so it doesn't affect Einstein per se.
Well, it.
Einstein building.
No, it's, it's an overall waiver. It's a, it's a waiver of all of those together, so. But it's not, I would say Einstein's probably made whole. If you're concerned about Einstein not having enough parking, I don't think that's, by giving this waiver, I don't think that you would be putting their ability to fully, to serve their customers at peril.
Okay.
So from a staff perspective, are you basi- basically just looking at this as all one building?
Yes, it's one group of uses, one group of uses who share a parking lot. So you add up all the uses, you look at all the uses, you add up all the parking spaces, are they all encompassed in that lot?
So there doesn't need, I'm sorry, does there need to be a shared parking agreement then even? Or we just, because it's the same landlord for all of it?
The same landlord, it's the same property owner for all of these parcels that are in question. But I do think a shared parking agreement should happen because we have different parcels.
Yeah, it seems like it should, but then I don't, I don't think the landlord's here, right? Like, it seems odd to do that.
I think there are existing leases that describe the parking rights as it relates to the park, which defines the shared arrangement. I think that the owner of Einstein is this international German company that is hard to, if you made a, a, a shared parking agreement, it continued to be like an interesting process getting there, but I think it's defined in the leases.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I just don't want us to run into a, into a problem, I guess.
I guess I assume, I thought through the reports that we were getting a shared parking agreement. No?
I think both Kristen and I would like a shared parking agreement or some, something that, some legal document that shows that all of these uses have access to that parking lot.
Cause the applicant's indicating that a shared parking agreement might not.
It may, it maybe it doesn't have to be with Einstein's, maybe the landlord.
Right.
We can work with the landlord to put something in place that says, we don't know what we're calling it. Fast casual restaurant A is gonna share parking with community center B.
So do we need to add a condition that?
Yeah.
They.
I would say that you add a condition that the shared parking be recorded in an agreement against the property and staff can determine which parties will execute that. Staff and the city attorney.
You cool with that?
You know, I don't, it's, I, I don't wanna speak for Erin, so that makes it a little bit tricky for me. I think that the waiver could apply to our uses. Einstein's clearly over provided for. They're using night spaces at maximum on any particular day. So I, I don't think it's gonna be controversial with them and I'm sure you can get whatever representation from the landlord needed. I just know that this German, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea was that the city was amenable to getting that from the landlord. They just want something recorded.
I'm sure that Erin would provide with whatever you need to work that out with him. I just can't represent for him.
Right, that's why it was kind of like, why I brought up the questions because it seemed like we're talking about, uh, parking, uh,
A shared parking.
Shared parking agreement, but with the landlord. It's gonna be to himself, but because it's split part, or it's separate parcels, it kind of needs to be there.
He can do a, a declaration.
Right.
Essentially for on his own property.
He's also not here as well, so that was kind of the, I guess, kind of the, kind of the problem with that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I assumed that was gonna be a condition of approval all along, so I don't know if I misinterpreted something. Yeah, and it's not about Einstein. I get that. It's about who comes after Einstein. I mean, this is a forever thing, potentially.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
So it sounds like the ten percent waiver is good with a condition statement and a condition regarding a landlord shared parking declaration? I just wanna make sure I have all these items. Like, someone's jotting down these.
A, and a legal, a legal recordable agreement with the landlord for shared parking between, um, as approved by staff and city attorney.
Something like that.
Our waiver, do we have to? I feel like we should pick one of the reasons. I'm trying to pull it up. I couldn't grab it for whatever reason I might have.
It's current or anticipated levels of employees or patrons, peak usage versus normal usage, bank and reserved parking for future use, opportunities to provide or accommodate green space additionally to minimize in previous areas on site. Provision of valley parking or other means of accommodating offsite that will not overburden public parking that's reasonable to on-street parking. Neighborhood or other surrounding characteristics justify the deviation. Strict application of the ordinance would unreasonably hinder development for the site or the permitted use. An alternative parking requirement would be appropriate. Modification will not negatively impact parking in the city. Proximity to the site to local, regional transit, including but not limited to smart bus stops, bicycle sharing stations, light rail, et cetera.
I mean, so I feel like number one, current or anticipated levels of employees and or patrons is what we've kind of been.
Discussing.
Discussing and mulling, so is that the reason? I feel like we need to attach one of the standards for why we're giving it, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Does that feel okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you keeping track here from?
Are you keeping track, Lisa?
Kind of, um.
And everything is s- uh, subject to compliance with consultant reviews. And you need the language that he drafted for us. And that the architecture and materials as presented meet the standards for site plan approval.
Shouldn't you just be making a motion now you're doing all this?
Are you making a motion?
My computer died. I'm useless.
Oh.
I can't make motions. Yeah, she can't make motions. Like, I got a comically large dead battery symbol.
Someone just startled a motion and we can all walk through it together.
I will make the motion to approve PSU dash oh nine dash twenty-three. Address two seven three 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 to two seven three eight seven Woodward Avenue. Subject to all consultant reviews. Regarding the site plan, um, a determination has been made that the architecture and materials as presented meet the standards for site plan approval per section one thirty-eight dash six seventy-nine.
We find that the landscaping meets. Right, we have to find that with every site plan, don't we?
With the exception of what was in the car I wanted in there.
Well, but that's in the, that's a, subject to the consultant satisfaction of the consultant reviews. That's in the first part of it. And a, the ten percent parking reduction is granted, subject to.
Based on current or anticipated levels of employees or patrons. Do you remember it?
Subject to.
If you want this, you can read that in, or I just don't feel like I should read it in. Those are the two additional conditions.
Specifically subject to applicant's management of its uses within the development, consistent with its representations made at the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting, such that its customers are not spilling beyond the designated space, parking spaces into the neighborhood.
I just got the other condition on there too.
And conditioned upon the owner of the property providing a recordable legal document addressing shared parking among the uses of the building in a form acceptable to staff and approved by the city attorney.
Second.
We do like to call it all.
Yeah, who's second with that? Please. Uh, Commissioner Dower.
Yes.
Commissioner Hamali.
Yes.
Commissioner Aronson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner Bartis.
Yes.
Chair Kepner.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your partnership.
Thank you for being patient and waiting so long.
We'll make you proud, it's gonna be great.
Don't you love that a Palestinian made that motion? The love. Liaison reports?
Yes, I went to Chamber of Commerce meeting last week and it was a full retreat meeting, so it was like a four hour meeting.
Holy crap.
And, yeah. And. They set the plan and their, their direction, I guess I would say, for the whole year regarding all of their different events. I'm trying to think, gosh, they covered so much.
I can imagine, yes.
Like, it was, yes, they covered a lot. They covered all of the different planning for the Art Bash, all the, the three main events and sponsorships, volunteerism that they're gonna try to step up in that I'm gonna also kind of help with. They covered their, all their membership needs for getting more members and the member benefits and, and all these other, other fests that they, they work on. I, yeah, that, that's about it. They, they're doing, they're using a new accounting system soon to do other financials.
Lovely.
So, um, yeah, they're, they're not too much really crossed directly over to planning. I mean, I just reported out to them about the RRC and.
Right.
They knew Vitrine was closing too. Already. So.
Cool.
That's about it.
I went to the DDA meeting, it was mostly budget and planning for the events and stuff for next year, so not a ton to report. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I didn't, sorry. Pausing to see if anyone else did. Uh, I went to the environmental committee last week. So they, they did have the facility manager for the city there, discuss some different projects that are going on with city buildings. Gave some stats on the rechargeings stations, which was kind of interesting. Yeah. They discussed some Berkeley Days recap stuff. They did review their committee mission statement and asked about our, I guess, appetite involvement with some of their advisory ideas and stuff, such as like native plannings or, you know, things on certain things. And then I forgot the gentleman's name, but he did go to some, a SEMCOG meeting to, to understand some different grants for cities based on multitude of different infrastructure, stuff based around kind of sustainability and sustainable cities, so.
Nice. Very cool. I didn't, is that over here?
Yes, please.
All right.
Move to adjourn. There's a motion on the floor.
We, I'll be fast, I promise. We had a special meeting last night at city council. The first reading was passed to allow for a forty-five day extension for the marijuana businesses if they exceed their hundred and eighty day without completion. The second part to that ordinance is that if they don't open or if it's deemed void, expires revoked or not renewed, there won't be a replacement unless deemed by city council to reopen the application process, so. Currently, there's three and two more may be affected, so that, told you it was quick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My only thing is, please look at those on the ordinance steering committee materials and then last, for the daycare center, since we already know we'll have one absence. Would the people here want to do a special meeting or look at special meeting dates or otherwise we'll have to look at April?
My brain doesn't work well right now.
I may not be here on the nineteenth, or March, March nineteenth.
You will not be here March nineteenth?
I don't. It's, right now it's sixty, forty, I will not.
Okay. So I don't need to know dates right now, I just need to know, yes, I'm interested in a special meeting or no, I'm not interested in a special meeting? I'm okay with a special meeting.
I'm okay with a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, and I would send out a doodle with the dates and things.
Okay.
Lisa, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with a special meeting.
I'm, I'm actually gonna be gone in our April meeting, so I think a special meeting is probably appropriate. I'm at a conference and I'm speaking on the twenty-third.
Okay. So I will look at special meeting dates and send out a doodle. So that we can get everyone. And I might talk to you first, Lisa, to see, cause I think you have the toughest available, what you said. Now we're done. Cool.
We got a motion to adjourn? Oh, yeah.
I made a motion and somebody over there seconded it.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I forgot to say aye.